Welcome, everybody. This is the regular Encinita City Council meeting at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, May 26, 2021. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Henze.
Here.
Councilmember Lines.
Here.
Councilmember Mosca. Councilmember Mosca, I do see his present.
I'm here.
There you are.
Hello.
Deputy Mayor Krantz, let's see, did he join? I do not see Deputy Mayor Krantz. And Mayor Blakespear.
Here.
Record will show all members are present with the exception of Deputy Mayor Krantz, and when he arrives, we'll note his arrival in the minutes.
Okay, great. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. And now we have our first special presentation or proclamation. This is the San Diego Academy presentation on storm water quality.
And Mayor Blakespear, before they start, I just wanted to note that Deputy Mayor Krantz is present.
Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Patty Diaz. I am the SWIP instructor at San Diego Academy, and I want to thank all of you for allowing us to present today. We have been working on this project for five years at San Diego Academy, and these interns, some of them have been with me for four years. And this is the presenters we have tonight, so I am going to share my screen. And we'll begin with the presentation, beginning with Ms. Ava. Give me one second to share my screen.
Oh, it's, why is it, hang on one second, sorry about that. There we go.
Okay, good evening. My name is Ava. We represent the SWIP interns ranging from freshmen to seniors here at San Diego Academy. Tonight, we are here to tell you about what we have accomplished, began with data and findings, and make suggestions to you and the city to enhance your efforts to improve water quality in the Santa Lejo Lagoon, the Bataquitas Lagoon, and of course, our ocean. This is the fifth year of SWIP internship at SDA. SWIP stands for Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. This is... Okay, echo, I'm sorry. This is a career path and college preparatory internship that educates and trains us in water quality professional skills. We collect data associated with stormwater runoff and urban drought. After identifying potential areas of improvement, we develop BMPs, or best management practices, to reduce the pollutants going into our storm drains. The program culminates in a SWIP plan for our school campus that we present to the school board.
Hi, good evening. I'm Andrew Forgerini. Over the course of the last five years, SWIP interns have designed and implemented some very creative BMPs. Our intern Julia created a water bottle sticker. Our intern Jenna produced T-shirts advocating our cause. Our interns Maya and Ava created wall tiles. Our intern Amber worked with facilities to install rain barrels. Our interns Niall and Liam created rock burritos. Our interns Cruz and Dylan created informative PSAs. And all interns have cleaned and improved many of the school's storm drain catch basins.
Your COVID movement focused away from our school site and into our neighborhoods. We learned that the same issues that we have been studying on our school campus are also around our homes. Through distance learning, we collected and analyzed data and came up with BMPs for our neighborhoods. We also picked up our stormwater collection and testing kits from school before our first rain event. We discovered that the same pollutants we were finding at our school are also present in our neighborhoods.
We also met with Eric Steenblock. He talked about all of the work the city is doing to reduce stormwater pollution. We discussed the work we are doing, presented our findings, and asked what more we could do as interns to help the city. Next, we met with Lori Walsh, the senior engineer, stormwater management of the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board. She gave us the regional perspective in how the city of Encinitas fits in with the other co-permittees for the Colesbad and San Diego watersheds.
Hi, my name's Garrett. With all this information, we focused on the big issue that we all identified, awareness. We went through many iterations to develop a stencil with SWIP's message, "You are the filter," that puts ownership of the problem on the passerby and brings attention to storm drains. We also created a mock-up seen on the right to test what it would look like on the sidewalk. Next. This leads to our first suggestion for you. A stencil information program to better educate residents on their role in helping the waterways. Many of the storm drain inlets around the city have the message "No Dumping," as seen here. This message doesn't apply to people who aren't dumping pollutants directly into the storm drain, and instead, it makes them feel complicit in the pollution, while they may be contributing in other ways. We have already implemented our design on the SDA campus, as shown in these photos, and they have already begun drawing attention to the selected drains. We had the stencil produced and gave them to our district facilities department. These were so well-received that they are planning on using the stencils on storm drains throughout the school district. We suggest you consider adopting this stencil as well on city storm drain inlets in order to draw attention to stormwater pollution on a larger scale.
Signage on storm drain inlets is one step in the right direction, but how do we keep pollutants from entering the MS4 system in the first place? Eric talked about street sweeping being an important part of the city's efforts, but you can't sweep every street right before it rains. And yes, every 1,789 storm drain boxes are cleaned at least once every two years, and the problem drains more often. We believe residents should be more engaged, and some, like ourselves, would be willing to help out. We met with Susan Harpers from the city of Seattle's Adopt a Storm Drain and discussed how the program works. She said that the city would manage a website where residents can adopt a drain near their homes and keep them clear of litter and debris. It impressed us how willing residents were to partner with the city in order to keep their local water bodies clean and free of trash and pollutants. We would be happy to explore how we can bring this program into the city of Encinitas.
Hello, my name's Amelia. This has been a key pollutant that we have, oh, sorry. We all know that Pacific Garbage Patch is a huge environmental catastrophe. Approximately 80% of the debris comes from land. Our stormwater MS4 is a significant contributor. According to Lori Walsh, the state water board is dealing with this important issue through the new trash amendment plan. This has been a key pollutant that we have been focused on for the past five years. One of our BMP solutions was installing hydrogates at SDA, Degania Middle School, and Capri Elementary. These were donated and installed by the inventor of the hydrogate as a demonstration to the SWIP interns. For us, one of the key benefits of this BMP was its ability to reduce trash from the MS4 system, keeping it out of our local waterways and reducing trash accumulation in the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. As an exercise, we took measurements of storm drain inlets and projected the costs associated with installing hydrogates in our neighborhoods. We think this is another BMP the city might consider to prevent trash and litter from entering our MS4 systems.
In addition to the structural BMPs like hydrogates, educating residents can go a long way in achieving behavioral change. Access to information is important in driving change in the community. The more people are aware, the more likely they are to make better choices for the environment. For example, if city residents knew that the water flowing through their streets and storm drains could end up in the Santa Lejo or Bataquitos Lagoons, it might motivate them to change some of their pollution-contributing behaviors. Next slide, thank you. We think that this information could be accessible in a location well-known to Encinitas residents. For example, our city's website. We would be happy to work with the city of students and residents to help enhance important stormwater quality information. As an example, this year, we have produced several educational outreach tools for ourselves and our fellow SDA students. Our SWIP intern Garrett created the stencil and correlated water bottle stickers. Our intern Camilla has created the informational flyer you see on the slide. And our intern Hannah created a series of imprinted bags with messages telling people to be environmentally friendly with our drains. The bags were filled with stormwater pollution prevention information given to us by Eric Steenblock and given to students at SDA.
Hi, my name is Hannah. So several current and former SDA interns, along with SWIP interns from other schools, have formed a group dedicated to improving water quality across the state of California. As seen here, this group is called New Voice Lobby, or NVL. As a part of NVL, we will be lobbying the state water board to include students in the Phase 2 Small Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer System MS4 Permit Renewal. Regarding NVL's positions, there are four main things we are focusing on. First is requiring school districts to be included in the Phase 2 MS4 statewide general permissions. The second one is incentivizing school districts to educate all students about stormwater. The third is incentivizing school districts to include students in completing the annual permit reporting requirements. And lastly, we, students, believe that this is a critical time to gain knowledge and experience about water quality. In this way, all students can join New Voice Lobby in a movement of young voices dedicated to improving our water bodies in California and across the world. With all of this, we would sincerely appreciate your effort to contact the state water board in supporting our positions. So this is the end of our presentation. Thank you for your time and for supporting the SCA SWIP internship program over the past five years. We look forward to working with you and city staff to continue caring for our valuable water bodies. And now we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you so much for that great presentation. We can tell that you put a lot of effort into it and really prepared it. And so I just want to say thank you for your five years of work and also for dedicating yourself to this important issue, because we all know that we're connected in an ecosystem, and what we put down the drains ends up in things like the Santa Lejo Lagoon. And so having young people like you engaged at this, at your level, at your age, and being able to carry that forward and then amplify that message and communicate with the city council and the public who's watching is just really critically important. So I'm really thrilled by that, and I want to thank the teachers and Mr. Bill Dean and the other partners who made this happen. So I see that my council colleague has her hand up, but yes, let's give a big round of applause over to your hard work. So thank you. It always feels good to make the world a better place, and that's what you guys are doing. So you should really pat yourself on the back about it. We're so proud. So go ahead, Councilmember Lines.
Mayor Blakespear, thank you. Well, thank you very much to all of the students and to Patty Diaz for organizing them and staying with them for so many years, and to our very own Eric Steenblock and the others mentioned who have contributed. I would like to raise my hand to say that I'm interested in following up on what the students presented as far as recommendations for our city council regarding the Adopt a Stencil for Use at the Storm Drain Inlets and Adopt a Storm Drain, and putting information on our website, and there were other recommendations that the students made. And I would like to just make my interest known, maybe work with Eric Steenblock and follow up with how we might integrate some of their amazing ideas into our city and our processes. In addition, I know we have EcoFest and John Piatta online today, and I hope that there's a connection there with the Eco Day. And John just came on on his video again, but he's smiling, so I'm sensing he gets that as well. Thumbs up.
Yeah, let's hear from Eric Steenblock about how to connect those recommendations with our city process.
So the good news is we're already very connected with this group. So we've been working with them on these connections, and it is nothing but an open line of communication. I've already let them know that we are absolutely open to looking into these things. Especially the stencil program is something that we'd be 100% supportive of, of bringing that out more broadly to the community, even outside their campus. Building additional information onto our website, I mean, that's a lens that we were so appreciative of, because we need to hear that feedback. What are people looking for? What are people interested in? What's adding value to their day-to-day concerns? And so we'll just continue to work with them. Absolutely. I'm taking copious notes. I wrote down all their recommendations, and we certainly have this on the record. So I'm excited to work with them. I can't overemphasize and stress how inspiring they are to us and the profession that I'm involved in. So we're here to support them, and we appreciate their work, and we'll be here for them through the long run.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Krantz?
Yes, I wanted to thank the SWIP team for all their efforts. And, you know, it's really good to have youth get involved in these issues, because I'm really counting on you all to save the world. We desperately need your guidance and your help in activating on these very important issues. Meanwhile, Eric, I was wondering, as I look at the city's My Encinitas page here, it looks like the block that is the San Diego Academy campus has storm drains surrounding the facility, but there's nothing mapped on the campus. Does all their stormwater essentially end up on the street?
Yes.
Okay.
It enters into our system, yeah.
The tennis courts appear to have some newer, you know, they're newer, they've been constructed more recently, and it looks like there maybe is some biofiltration facilities there. But yeah, it would be interesting to see if there were a way to capture some of that water and do a little harvesting or whatever the case may be. So I appreciate Bill Dean's work and Ms. Diaz and the leaders that are working with these young people to save the world. So thank you very much.
So let's ask the city manager to follow up with the staff on implementing these things, these recommendations. Consensus? Yes. City manager?
Mary, you caught me eating something. I apologize. But yes, it's wonderful.
Okay. Councilmember Henze?
Just a quick comment, that I really like that idea of having neighbors take ownership of a specific area that they would clean out maybe before a big rainfall, so that you know exactly the area that you're responsible for removing litter and making sure that none of that ends up in the ocean. So I would love to support you in that, and I hope to join Councilmember Lines to actually implement these recommendations.
So we know that we'll need some follow-up, like in a few months, to make sure that this has happened, right? So Councilmember Lines and Henze, you're tasked with that. Okay. Okay, great. Well, thank you, everybody. We're appreciative, and you can stay on and watch as much of this meeting as you want. And we hope you have a great rest of your night, and thank you. So the next item is presentation by Melinda Carmichael, the Chief Business Development Officer for Homegrown Fun, which is otherwise known as the San Diego County Fair, but renamed this year. Is she here?
Yes, I do see her.
Well, we can...
Melinda, you can start when ready. I think she's...
I think she's trying.
I mean, being on her cellphone and can't unmute. What is it, star six?
Oh, here we go.
I found it. Thank you for the star six. All right, can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. Well, good evening, councilmembers of Encinitas. Thank you so much for allowing us to share our Homegrown Fun event with you. And we have a short presentation that we'd like to share. So I am going to get that going. All right, can you all see that?
We can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Let's go. Here we go. All right. So first and foremost, we are doing a little different version this year. It's not quite the San Diego County Fair, as it has been a large scale in the past, due to COVID guidelines and the restrictions. We have decided to do a smaller event to bring folks together in a very safe manner so we can experience some fun and excitement in a little different fashion. So our event is called Homegrown Fun, and it will be from June 11th through the 4th of July, I'm sorry. We are just moving. Okay, here we go. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. So one of the things that we're very proud of is we are hosting a vaccination superstation here at the Del Mar Fairgrounds. And we've actually vaccinated over 100,000 or issued over 100,000 vaccinations so far. And we're really proud of this, because we're trying to get folks back out in the community and be able to do things in a safe manner. So we've been running this vaccination center for a few months now, and we've had some really good reviews with it, and folks have been able to get in and out and in a very pleasurable experience, and so we can get back in the community and get that rolling. So that said, we're going to continue running the vaccination supercenter, at least through June. And so with that, our footprint is a little smaller than it would normally be for the San Diego County Fair, and that's another reason why it's a smaller event. But with that, we are going to have several things reminiscent of the fair, starting with the Taste of the Fair, having our traditional favorites. We will have over 35 favorite food stands. In addition, we are going to have daily entertainment with a very ever-popular Swifty Swine Pig Races. We have the Extreme Dog Show coming back that features dock dogs and agility dogs, and you'll actually have an opportunity to meet the dogs after the show. We have an AgriLand featuring daily cow milk milking with partnership from Holland Dairy Dairy. We're going to have a children's pedal tractor experience, where kids, they can be a farmer for the day and experience Plant, Grow, Eat Program, where kids can come to the event and actually plant a radish or some type of food and take it home with them. We're going to have Make and Takes, which is events that you can come. And in the past, we've had where people would make their items at home and then bring them to display at the fair. Well, this year, we're going to do the opposite, where folks can come in and they actually make things, crafts and different items, and then they'll be able to take them home with them. We aren't going to have a large amount of rides, but we will have a big wheel. So we're going to have a Ferris wheel, and we're going to have a carousel, and we'll have Happy Day Pony rides for the kids. We'll have daily on-the-spot contests, as well as demonstrations to inspire our traditional competitive exhibits program. And then we'll also have some strolling entertainment, including a magician and a juggler. Here's a few pictures of some of our past events. So those are little Swifty Swine Pigs and the Dock Dogs and the Big Wheel. And then we are also going to have about 280 vendors in our three exhibit halls. And those will, you know, it'll be some of the favorites, and you'll have a lot of shopping experiences and be able to go through and, you know, experience all the normal shopping that we have done in the past. Celebrating agriculture, we are going to have some, we're still going to have our Junior Livestock Show. We will not be having it open to the public, though. It will be closed to the exhibitors. So the hard-working kids will be able to show their animals, and we'll be having a virtual auction that will take place on Saturday, June 26. So you can see it online, but it just won't be open to the public. But we did want to make sure that we continued with this tradition of agriculture and education for FFA kids. And then, in addition, we are, whoops, there's our Junior Livestock again. And then, again, some of the other demonstrations that we'll be exhibiting will be home arts, gardening, and woodworking. And then on 4th of July, we are going to have our 4th of July show. It will all be, we partnered with state and county public health, and we have put a lot of work into making sure that we are following all guidelines, although it sounds like they're going to be opening up quite a bit after the 15th. But our plan is to continue with a safe and, you know, wearing those, keeping, you know, in line with the events that we've been working with. So we may pivot a little bit on the guidelines, depending on how they open up, but currently, we're going to follow them as they exist with masks and making sure people are socially distanced, and we're keeping a good eye on capacity. Our fireworks show is going to be a little bit less this year in that we're going to be using some smaller shells, so it's not going to be as grand. It'll be a little bit less in the timing, but we do want to celebrate and continue with our patriotic nature of having fireworks on the 4th of July and providing that to the community. And so our tickets and parking are available online. And they are, we are going to try and target all folks to go through our online process to buy tickets and parking. Parking is very limited, so you'll want to buy that in advance. We're also encouraging ride share, and you can also take the NCTED Fun Tripper, which will get you over right to the direct gate on Solana Gate and let you in. And the tickets are going to be $10 to get in, and parking is $12. So, and that concludes our presentation. And wrapping up again with our COVID compliance, so we just want to make sure that we provide a very safe experience, allow folks to get back out, enjoy some time away from our homes that we've been locked up in for 18 months, and experience that. And in 2022, we do plan to have our full-fledged fair. So this will be a smaller version, a safer version, and hopefully also enjoyable. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much, Melinda. You know, it really does encourage alternate means of transportation when the price to park your car is more than the ticket to get in.
Yeah, it does. And we absolutely, because we have limited parking, we wanted to make sure that we, you know, encouraged that piece. But we also took a reduction in parking from our past parking fees. But we also took a reduction in parking from our past parking fees, and we substantially reduced. So the tickets are very affordable, so a family can get out and experience, you know, a little entertainment and/or a carpool and get into the event.
Yeah, no, I applaud it. I think it's putting the incentives in the right place, so I think that's great. Councilman, Deputy Mayor Crans.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the presentation, and thanks for the plug to NCTD. I know they have their shuttle from the Solana Beach Coaster Station, so if Encinitas residents want to take the short train ride down to Solana Beach and then catch a shuttle over, the cost for a round-trip ticket and entrance to the event is $12, so it's a, it's a pretty good bargain. I also know that the last year, there have been a gazillion e-bikes sold, so I'm expecting that there will be a lot of potential visitors that will ride e-bikes. Is there a good place to be able to park the bikes at the fairgrounds?
You know, we do also have our horse park property that someone could also park in and walk over through the path. And that's a great question. I'll have to follow up on the e-bike section if we have actually a designated spot for that.
That'd be great if it was right to the front gate, and you could park right there and take advantage of that. But thank you very much for the presentation.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that, yeah, we have a protected bike lane all through Cardiff that connects to the Coastal Rail Trail in Encinita, in Solana Beach, which goes almost directly to the fairgrounds. So having a bicycle parking, I think, is really critical. It's not just e-bike parking, but all, whatever type of bike someone arrives on, because, yeah, for $12 a car, I think it's quite possible that people would make another choice. The other thing is, I mean, having been to the fair a lot of times on my bike and driving, it's really congested to drive, and you have to park substantially farther away than if you ride your bike. So I do hope that you make accommodations and really think ahead about having enough bike parking that it seems appealing, because you don't want to get kind of a bad review about that part of the experience.
Yes, wonderful. We'll, I'll look into that and circle back with you. But our parking is going to be on our track, so on the horse track, so it will be relatively close, so folks can walk into the fairgrounds from the horse track. So it won't be a terribly far walk, but like as in the past, where we would park across the street on big dirt and, you know, wheel people in, we're still using that piece of the property for the Vaccination Supercenter. So it will be relatively close for the most part.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for the information. We appreciate hearing it. And we'll move on to our next item, which is our proclamation. So this is the presentation of the Proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I'm excited to share that I'm wearing my, my orange pin. I'll show you all here very closely. And it says, "Mayors Against Illegal Guns." So I received it, I think, at one of these events at City Council several, a couple of years ago, and I always wear it on the day where we do our presentation to the City Council meeting. So we're not in person, but I'm still wearing it here, and I'm excited about that. So let me, I'm excited about it because it brings awareness to a critical problem. Obviously, this is not something we're celebrating, but something we're recognizing as important that needs attention. So I'm just going to read most of this proclamation here. So whereas, every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, 25 times more likely. And whereas, California has 3,000 gun deaths every year with a rate of 7.7 deaths per 100,000 people. California has the 44th highest rate of gun deaths in the US. And whereas, cities across the nation, including Encinitas, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, protecting public safety in communities is the highest responsibility of mayors and city council members. And whereas, support for Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, mayors and city councils know their communities best and create public police policies to support actions that protect citizens, address issues of local criminal activity, and issues that are best positioned to keep our citizens safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in gun violence in cities. And then whereas, I'm going to skip to near the bottom here so that I can hand it over to Nancy to say a few words, too. So, joining this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4th, which is the first Friday in June, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe. So therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Catherine Blakespear, mayor of the City of Encinitas, along with all city council members, declare the first Friday in June, June 4th, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human life. So with that, I'll hand it over to you, Nancy.
Thank you, Mayor Blakespear, and city council members for supporting National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 4. I'm Nancy Hardwick, a longtime resident of Encinitas and a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Moms has more than 6 million supporters nationwide and is a leading advocate for gun violence prevention. Our council's support of this annual endeavor has been a hallmark of their efforts to bring attention to the work of all gun violence prevention advocates nationwide. As mentioned, the Wear Orange campaign was started by the Friends of Hadaya Pendleton, a young woman who was tragically murdered in 2013, just two weeks after she performed in President Obama's second inaugural parade. We honor her memory and the lives of all gun violence victims and survivors on Friday, June 4th, and encourage everyone to wear orange. Thank you so much for your time and for your support again this year. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Nancy, and thank you, Steve Bartram, and the other people who are on this call because of this topic. It's really important to us in the City of Encinitas and in all communities, and it's important that we continue to raise awareness about it, not just every once a year, but all the time. So thank you for your dedicated work.
Thanks again.
Okay, next, we move on to our oral communications.
Yes, Mayor, we do have several. Our first speaker is Cindy Cremona. Just a reminder to make sure that you unmute your microphone, and each speaker will have three minutes.
Hey Cathy, I want to speak specifically about AP.
Okay, so you are not doing an oral communication?
We could do it at Oral Communications, or could you, would you prefer I do it?
We'll do it during-
The agenda item comes up.
Yeah, we'll do it during AP. I'll call you then.
Okay, thanks, Cathy.
Okay, then how about Diane Grace? And just as Cindy did, if you are being called during oral communications and actually want to speak on an item, just let me know.
Good evening, council. I want to express concern tonight after hearing at the City Planning Commission last week the dreadful stories of residents on Sedonia Street and their experiences with the pesticide-induced odor and toxic airflow coming from the hemp farm across the street. It concerns me and others I know because our health, and especially our lung health, is very important to us all. I hope the city council will ask staff to bring to them an analysis of the current municipal code, which might need updating or improving to create a satisfactory response to the situation we heard about, which is detrimental to Encinita citizens. Perhaps the municipal code needs a detailed process for the appropriate immediate response to these problems or concerns which marijuana businesses bring to citizens and business owners, not just the name of the person to contact. I would hope these revisions to the municipal code would also describe how to contact the city responsible staff person. That would be the amount of time before a response from city staff would be received. What would be the appeal process if city staff's response was negligible or inconsistent or inadequate? And if fines or penalties are applied to careless or dangerous businesses, what would be the amount of the fines, and at what point would the business lose its business license and its CUP to operate in the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Logan. Nancy, you can start when ready.
Good evening, council. I had an opportunity to speak at the Planning Commission last Thursday and express my concerns about the wording in the staff report regarding Measure H. I know you don't have a choice in the language in Measure H. However, you do have a choice in how the staff writes about Measure H, and accuracy is very important, as you know. On page three of the staff report, it states Measure H was placed on the ballot through a petition by Encinitas voters. I assure you, and you're all very aware, that this measure was brought forward by an out-of-town Association of Marijuana storefront owners who are only profit-motivated, and I think you all experienced them. They paid people to sit outside of our local grocery stores to deceive our Encinita citizens to sign the petition. Also on page three, the ordinance specifies several land use regulations to ensure that adverse impacts to the adjacent use are limited. That's a quote, is very deceptive. There's absolutely no data that supports this ordinance or any other marijuana ordinance that it mitigates damage to adjoining properties. And in fact, the data indicates just the opposite. For example, the City of San Diego had to set up a cannabis business division to deal with the impact of the marijuana businesses on the city, which takes a budget of $1 million annually to run. That's taxpayer money. And the city's a distant oceanside, who had to increase the staff size of their planning and accounting departments to accommodate the added work of mitigating marijuana businesses. So as a citizen of Encinitas, I can only guess at the financial and societal costs of Measure H. So please, let's just look very closely at the wording in that staff report. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly McCormick. Kelly, you need to unmute your microphone. We can't hear you.
Hello, this is Kelly McCormick. Thank you for your time this evening. I would just like to reiterate the points that have been made that needs to be discussed, and it should be done transparently and in a way that's completely open to the public. I would also urge maps that detail the zoning areas where these businesses could be. We desperately need odor ordinances, and I just urge you to make sure that all of this is done in the public view with public participation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tyler James.
Very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tyler James. Tyler, you can start when ready.
Good evening. My name is Tyler James, and I'm calling to ask for your, for plans to safeguard the environment when new marijuana regulations are put into place, as well as protections for people who live or work near marijuana cultivation sites or manufacturing businesses. Some people may be unaware that marijuana manufacturing includes the extraction of hash lube. I saw staff reports saying extraction methods would be non-volatile, but it lacks detail. Presumably, this will rule out the use of butane, but what about ethanol extraction? Even carbon dioxide extraction can be problematic. CO2 must be placed under pressure during the process, and if not done properly, an explosion can occur. CO2 extraction contributes significantly to greenhouse gas emissions. A recent report from Colorado State University says the carbon footprint of the state's marijuana industry is 30% higher than it is from coal mining, and Colorado is a coal-producing state. As for indoor cultivation, climate controls and lights run around the clock, mostly powered by electricity and natural gas. Depending on location, growing one ounce of marijuana indoors is the same carbon footprint as burning seven to 16 gallons of gasoline. At this time, when Encinitas is committed to reducing greenhouse gases, how can we guard against the marijuana industry erasing the gains we're making of climate change? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Sheridan.
Hello there. My name is Nancy. I'm a Cardiff resident, and I want to mention how much I enjoyed that great presentation from the SDA students on the storm water pollution. I'm especially impressed with the slogan, "You Are the Filter." It brings to mind that you, as representatives, are our filter to protect our community character and the quality of life for Encinitas residents. And I want you to know I appreciate your public service. I'd like to speak to the marijuana ordinance and the staff report presented at Planning Commission last Thursday. It was confusing whether CEQA would apply to individual marijuana business applicants. A webcast meeting Tuesday morning with the Bureau of Cannabis Control seemed to indicate that CEQA would apply. I trust that the staff report is updated to reflect the most up-to-date information regarding CEQA applicability. For example, page five of the staff report states, "Proposed buildings and construction projects will have no significant effect on the environment." Well, we already have evidence of existing significant and damaging harm from neighbors on Sedonia Street. Formalized complaints have been brought against the Ecker Farm due to the adverse environmental and health impacts of these agricultural hemp grows. I feel it's extremely naive and misguided to believe there's no potential for this ordinance to result in any direct or indirect harm, because we already know there is. Also, let's put in place effective mechanisms to respond to problems when they arise, especially since there has been nothing to address the Encinita citizens' complaints to date. And so I respectfully ask the city council and city staff to be more responsive to its citizens and give us a pathway to better living conditions. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Shirley Strom. Shirley, you can start when ready.
Hello? Yes, you can hear me, but I was commenting on 10C.
10C? Okay, thank you. I'll call you during that item. Thank you for letting me know. Our next speaker is Lucas K.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Hi, Lucas. I just had a few things to bring up in regards to the Lucidia Streetscape project. I think you all had an item on it at the last meeting. I just wanted to bring up two things. The first one was about lane width. I noticed, at least in the pictures that seem to be associated with the presentation, that the lane widths are 12 feet. My understanding is that wider lanes tend to encourage speeding and more reckless driving. And I was hoping that unless there's some sort of issue with maybe bus access or, you know, truck access, that the, it could be looked at to narrow the travel lanes for vehicles like that to 10 feet, or if that's not possible for bus access, maybe 11 feet. I know that I had brought that up to staff a while ago, and one person had mentioned a concern that drivers may confuse it for another travel lane, but I don't really think that's likely, because they're pretty well-marked as bike lanes. They have buffers, and even in- And even in the city of San Diego, they have one bike lane that's actually like two bike lanes right next to each other on Tory pines, and I don't think anybody mixes those up. So as long as you have good markings, I think it should be okay. And then the second thing I wanted to just bring up is if there are any sorts of lighting put in, I wanted to ask the city to make sure that it's done in a way that tries to minimize light pollution. There's a lot of new technology coming out with LEDs around stuff like narrowband amber lights. But regardless, just to make sure that the brightness is only as bright as it needs to be, that you look at maybe different times having more or less lighting and using technology that maybe increases brightness only when people are in the area. So those are just the two things I wanted to bring up. And I also wanted to say how cool it is that those students from SDA are working on the storm drain, storm drain stuff. Anyways, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teri Ann Skelly. Teri, you can start when ready.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm very sorry that the Planning Commission had a review last week the municipal code amendments for Measure H that will begin the process of permitting pot businesses in town. The changes are drastic for the specific plans for downtown Encinitas, the north, 101 corridor, Encinitas Ranch, and the Cardiff by the Sea. The city's expenses, or more precisely, the taxpayers' money associated with these municipal code changes, need to be a transparent communication system and clearly available as information to citizens. I was surprised to read on page three of the staff report that the city has hired a consultant, HDL Companies, to facilitate the cannabis business application process after approval of the proposed municipal code amendments by the California Coastal Commission. My concerns and recommendations regarding this statement of staff report page three are: Did the public know about the new expense of hiring HDL Company? Where is the information located? And where does it say how much it is? Also, HDL Company is very well-known in the public health world. They do a whole lot more than advise cities. They promote marijuana businesses at every opportunity in every city where they're hired. It is not unbiased. So when the city council members and staff ask for their advice, it should be counterbalanced by public health practitioners and marijuana youth prevention educators. Thank you.
Next speaker is Geraldine Kessler.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would just like to let you know how upset the neighborhood is about the Staver and Tory Pine Corp. plans to develop at least 31 homes on the already busy Melba Road. With the density, with the help of the density bonus law, the Staver family has lived in Encinitas and North County for many decades, and for the most part, always has been stewards of the land and environment in Encinitas and the surrounding areas. The Stavers family lived a quiet life, supporting environmental sound issues within the community. And this is another reason the placement of these homes with no regard to the surrounding community is deeply saddening. In addition to this, Brian Staver is selfishly trying to divide up the neighbors and prey on the vulnerable ones in order to get support for this project. This project will destroy a grove of Tory pines and cut down over 200 trees, leaving three only because they are boundary line and the boundary lines. In addition to this disaster, a historical home built in 1938 will be slated to be torn down. We had suggested keeping this beautiful home and the frontage area what it could serve as a natural bio- retention basin on the Melba property and leave the area alone. Perhaps a walking path/dirt path could be placed alongside of the road or adjacent to the sidewalk. Another alarming issue I recently found out about is the soil sampling that was done by GeoCon March 15, 2021 for the Staver project on Melba Road. Once again, the Stavers did not do their due diligence. The way in which the soil was sampled was not thoroughly done for a piece of property that has been used since the 70s as a greenhouse. What little sampling was done showed that the property contains higher-than-acceptable levels of these carcinogenics: chlorodyne, toxofen, hectachlor, exploit, and DDT. Forgive my pronunciation. I would like to point out this property is next to a middle school, the Boys and Girls Club, with a garden program and a preschool. The YMCA kids program used the field adjacent to the samples that were taken. I feel the city should be looking out for the neighborhood. You should be demanding a full environmental assessment of the soil. In fact, I think the sample that GeoCon did was way too little. The Stavers should be required to collect soil samples on a grid pattern across the site instead of six random locations that they did. They did not even sample the soil around the greenhouse. We have no idea if they had buried any of these pesticides in metal containers, which was common practice in the 70s. I asked the council and the planner of this project to please take a closer look at this project and to demand a full EIR by the Staver and the Tory Corporation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Wilcox.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Am I there? Thank you. Okay. As you know, more than 14 speakers spoke to item 8B, the cannabis amendment at Planning Commission last Thursday. All the speakers asked the Planning Commissioners to send along some recommendations and questions with the staff report. My particular recommendation was that there be some very clear language in the city's municipal code regarding conflict of interest for city council members and staff and marijuana business applicants. Perhaps you were as surprised as I was by the recent KPBS story regarding the amount of money coming from marijuana businesses to elected officials, although I guess I shouldn't have been that surprised by the pay-to-play practice. Although the KPBS article was regarding several elected officials who have economic involvement with marijuana businesses, it centered on the county's proposed ordinance to put marijuana businesses in the unincorporated areas of the county. The county's 30-plus planning groups were broadsided by this proposal since neither they or their community members had asked for marijuana businesses in the rural and backcountry. And the proposal came from Supervisor Fletcher, who has no unincorporated territory in his purview. Even more disturbing was this KPBS statement as the article went one step further. Quote, "Supervisor Fletcher said one of the consultants who helped draft the county's marijuana policies was Dallin Young, a local cannabis advocate and lobbyist, who was his field director of his mayoral run in 2013," end quote. "I am very concerned that our city doesn't find itself embroiled in this situation where the voice of money from cannabis capitalists takes precedence over the voice of the people. This is an easy fix. Heed the voice of the people. Avoid the real or perceived conflict of interest. Add the clear language." Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. That does conclude oral communications.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the public speakers. Now we'll go to our report from closed session.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members of the public. The city council met in closed session today on one item. All members were present. That item was existing litigation Service Point LLC versus City of Encinitas. And there were no reportable actions during that item. The city council discussed that particular lawsuit with the mayor and council. That concludes my report out from closed session.
Okay, thank you. To the city clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the posted agenda. And then moving to the consent calendar, I have a speaker, I have speakers on item 8P. And then I had a speaker on 8G, Elena Thompson, but I do not see her. I do not see her present.
Okay, so we have all items. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, all items with the exception of item 8P.
Okay.
I'll move approval of the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'm happy to second that.
Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Councilmember Moscow?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crans?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. And just to make a note that those items on the consent calendar that listed a public hearing, since there were no speakers, those public hearings are deemed to have been held. We can now move to item 8P.
Okay. How many public speakers do we have on 8P?
We have eight.
Okay, let's have a brief staff report, and then we'll go to the public speakers.
All right. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Jennifer Gates, principal planner. This item before you tonight is for consideration of the extension of the Jewish Family Service Safe Parking Program at Leach Tag Commons for an additional six months. On May 31, 2021, the existing use agreement with JFS and the lease agreement with Leach Tag will expire. JFS is currently requesting a six-month extension of the program. The use agreement with JFS and the lease agreement with Leach Tag will be amended to extend the expiration of the agreement for six months to November 30, 2021. All other provisions would still apply. This additional time will allow JFS to explore alternative site locations for the safe parking program. Staff is recommending that city council consider the authorization of that extension for the safe parking program. And if proposing an extension of the program, to adopt Resolution 2021-47, a resolution of the city council of the city of Encinitas extending the existence of a shelter crisis and taking actions to continue the safe parking program. And to approve the amendment to the term of the lease agreement between the city of Encinitas and Leach Tag Foundation. And to approve the amendment to the term of the use agreement between the city of Encinitas and Jewish Family Service. Chris Olson from Jewish Family Service is available to answer any questions regarding the program. And staff is available to answer any questions as well. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and hear from the public speakers.
Okay, our first speaker is Cindy Cramona.
Thank you, Kathy. Do you have my slide? Thank you. Just a sec, let me get to my speech. Mayor and council, good evening. I can spend time discussing the saga of the homeless parking lot, including how the city went behind residents' backs to secure the Leach Tag location, how the city not only ignored its residents, but tried to shame them for their legitimate concerns about this project. Or I could talk about how the city never reported the numbers as promised to the residents, or how the mayor arbitrarily decided to continue the parking lot when the few metrics we have do not prove success or efficacy. I will also refrain from discussing how the city discriminates against those in need in direct violation of HEEP grants rules. I do suggest the city review emails received about this issue, since the last request of the city did not show any emails opposing the extension. The email on your screens was written by a concerned neighbor on Union who sent this email directly to the mayor and council. Instead, I'd like to talk about how this parking lot has affected the surrounding communities. I understand the council chooses to ignore our increase in crime and rising drug epidemic, including drug overdoses and deaths, but residents are extremely aware and concerned for their neighborhoods. Many of us, myself included, no longer feel safe walking our dogs at night, shopping at Target or Rouse, or letting our children play in our local parks, including Cottonwood, Glen, and the Encinitas Community Park. Children have been seen descending into the creek off Encinitas Boulevard, which is a known hangout for drug addicts and dealers. Downtown has become increasingly uncomfortable to visit, including parking outside of the train station. The La Costa Park and Ride is now a homeless encampment, and residents are afraid to park there. Stolen bikes, stolen packages, and car break-ins are reported daily on X store and other social media sites. Residents are afraid and frustrated. My question and challenge to the council is this: How is what you aren't doing for the homeless compassionate? You tout a success for a $300,000 program that has served a handful of people while your city has been inundated with transients who are not interested in housing, getting clean, or becoming part of a responsible society? How are you, Mayor Blakespear and council, intending to address this growing and pressing issue? How many more young people have to overdose? How many more deaths will it take before this council addresses the crisis you created by your policies? It's quite clear our small city is not equipped to handle these types of issues, nor do you have the wherewithal to manage them. It's time to act out on your aspirations and direct the homeless to facilities and cities who are better equipped to compassionately handle the myriad of drug and mental problems we are seeing on our streets. The homeless parking lot should never have gone into a residential neighborhood. Unfortunately, many of our residents' concerns prove correct. So I ask compassionately to please find a location outside of Encinitas instead of building on a problem you have no ability to manage. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Bartek. Daniel, I do not see Daniel listed. So next is James Steiven. James was on there, too. Okay, I don't see James Steiven. Let's go to Teresa Beauchamp.
Honorable Mayor Blakespear and city council members, thank you for your service and for your history of supporting compassionate policies to support our unsheltered neighbors. My name is Teresa Beauchamp, and I have lived in old Encinitas for 33 years. I serve on Encinitas for Equality Housing Committee, and we exist to promote the affirmative furtherance of fair housing. The E4E Housing Committee strongly supports the extension of the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program for an additional six months at its current location, while a different location for the program is being determined. The only difference now compared to when the program was first presented to city residents and council is that we now have data to prove its efficacy. 68% of participants have been placed back into permanent housing, thanks to case managers on site. These case managers prevent folks from spiraling into chronic homelessness with a provision of comprehensive services that include nutrition, employment opportunities, medical care, and reentry into permanent housing. Homelessness in North County needs multi-pronged approach. The JFS SVP is a critical single prong of many that we need to support our unsheltered neighbors. It is important to note that 50% of program participants are employed and cannot find affordable housing. Additionally, the COVID-19 eviction moratorium will be lifted sometime this summer and will cause increased rates of homelessness. We support a yes vote to adopt Resolution Number 2021-47. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julie Thunder.
Hi, Kathy, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Shall I wait till the, okay, don't mind. Hello, mayor and council members. It's clear to anyone paying attention tonight that you will vote to extend the regional homeless parking lot lease for the six months requested. While I share your compassion for people who have fallen on hard times, I wish to turn your attention back to the residents and taxpayers whose patience is being challenged. After you once again vote 5-0, you'll soon have important decisions to make about the future of the lot. In defending the placement of the lot in a residential area, the mayor said more than once that it is for local Encinitans who have fallen on hard times. We now know this to be only partly true because in order for Jewish Family Services to qualify for the state funding, they had to use the homeless counts from all of North County. This is why it's now known as the regional homeless parking lot. If our fellow Encinitas citizens are truly benefiting from the lot, let's create a new program located on city land and operated by the city so that we can limit it to people who can show a connection to Encinitas. can limit it to people who can show a connection to Encinitas, like with the driver's license, an old utility bill, or a yearbook picture. This will create less of an attraction for out-of-town homeless persons to come here. And for reasons unknown, you are not enforcing your own city laws, specifically Encinitas Municipal Code Section 9.01.025, which states, "No person shall sleep or lie down in a vehicle parked on a public street or public property between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and no person shall use a vehicle as a temporary or permanent living quarters, abode, or place of habitation, either overnight or day by day." But today, nearly 20 vehicles were seen camping in the dirt section of the rail corridor in North Lucadia. And in Cardiff, we often have a lineup of car campers parked along Glen Park each evening. And both of our freeway park and rides on Birmingham and La Costa Avenue have several cars with people living in them. Why is this problem being ignored, especially when we have a parking lot facility for homeless persons to receive services? Disappointingly, car campers have been seen using the dirt and bushes for their toileting needs. How does this serve the taxpayers? How does this serve the Encinitas residents who have fallen on hard times? And why are we directing these car campers to the regional lot? Please work with the sheriff to start enforcing this law that's being ignored. You all have an opportunity to show your constituents that you represent everyone in your districts. Please show that you take this responsibility seriously and show compassion for both the downtrodden as well as the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Ayers.
Good evening. My name is Bob Ayers. I grew up and I still live in old Encinitas. I remain in support of the Safe Parking Program. Encinitas did not create homelessness, didn't create beach erosion or traffic congestion, we certainly didn't create gun violence. We're not going to solve them, but we cannot bury our heads in the sand. At the end of the day, we feel better. The citizens of Encinitas feel better when we can hold our heads high. We do that by taking action towards solution. And our head is held highest when we help people in need. They're counting on us. Please continue the city's collaboration with the JFCC, CRC, Leach Tag, and others to help those in need and keep all of our heads held high. Our commitment to this will attract other solutions. We need to find other solutions, but for now, this is working for what is intended. Please continue it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Morris. I do not see Jeff. He's not in attendance. So our next speaker is Bob Kent.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Bob Kent, Encinitas resident and member of Keys for Homes. We're local residents who advocate for the building of affordable homes in Encinitas for our seniors, our millennial and family residents, as well as for our frontline essential workers. We support the proposed six-month extension of the contract between JFS, the Leach Tag Foundation, and the city to continue the Safe Parking Program while JFS continues to explore alternative site locations. We have a housing affordability crisis in our region and also here in Encinitas. Without a strong financial footing, many lower-income households are living one paycheck, one car repair, or one medical emergency away from not being able to pay their rent. The COVID-19 crisis has only exacerbated the situation, with people earning lower incomes hit the hardest. While we are turning the corner on the COVID battle, which is good, future residential evictions may very well increase over the coming months, once the eviction moratorium is ended. So now, more than ever, having a safe, reliable, and dignified place to sleep at night is critically important for those individuals and families who are unfortunately living in their vehicles, almost all who are experiencing homelessness for the first time, while many continue to work. The Safe Parking Program is the last rung of homelessness prevention. And over the period of this pilot program, JFS' proven track record in case management services have demonstrated success by helping 69% of the households find their own individual pathway back to more stable housing, and most importantly, giving people hope for the future. Thank you to the Leach Tag Foundation and JFS, especially your essential frontline workers who work hard every day in support of the Safe Parking Program. And thank you to the mayor and city council for your leadership and humanity in addressing homelessness in Encinitas. Let's continue to do our part by helping others who are less fortunate. Please vote yes to extend the operation of the Safe Parking Program. Thank you.
That concludes speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moscow?
I have one question, Madam Mayor, and I see Captain Taft online, and so I was wondering if he could unmute himself and just entertain a question. Hi, Captain Taft. Thank you for being... Hi, thank you for being here with us tonight. Captain Taft of the San Diego County Sheriff's Department, who is our law enforcement agency here in Encinitas. We've had several comments here and on blogs that talk about the rise in crime that over the last year or so, and some folks even make a connection between the rise in crime and also the Safe Parking Program. I know that you and your deputies in department have been monitoring this. This was one of the conditions when we first kind of approved this, and so was wondering if... I know you probably don't have all the data with you right now, but I was wondering if you could share with us any observations that you have in terms of just the overall crime in Encinitas, because we are often here on city council, all of the data, see all the data, and hear the fact that this is one of the safest cities in San Diego County, if not the state of California, and also just any kind of observations you have about the Safe Parking Program.
Sure, I'd be happy to comment on it. The first thing is that this community is a very safe community. It's not crime-free. Crime has gone up, but this isn't the only community that crime has gone up. Throughout the entire county, we've seen an increase in crime. So Encinitas is no different than any other place. As far as the increase in crime, we've seen an increase in fentanyl deaths, that's true, but that's across the county, that's across this whole region in Southern California. It's becoming a very popular drug, it's very powerful, and therefore, more people are experimenting with it. So we have seen an increase in fentanyl deaths, but that has nothing to do with safe parking. I've monitored safe parking from the beginning. I get the crime reports specifically as it relates to safe parking. Every month, I look at it, I see if there's any direct correlation. I look at the particular crimes that may have occurred in that area, and I try to connect the dots. If there's any dots to connect, and there hasn't been any dots to connect. I also monitor the traffic, because that was one of the things that some of the residents brought up, that there'd be a tremendous amount of traffic impact, and that also has not the case. So my assessment of being involved and looking at the stats has been that the Safe Parking has had no impact that I can see as far as any crime increase. There are reasons crime has increased throughout this county and throughout this state, but that has nothing to do with the increase in Encinitas and the crime increasing in Encinitas has nothing to do with the Safe Parking. And that's my assessment.
All right. Thank you so much, Captain Taft. And I do want to say that I've recently seen data from SAMSSA, the National Agency under Health and Human Services, that is tasked with mental health and a bunch of other stuff, having to do with substance abuse, and they talk about just the rise of mental health issues, you know, not only mental health issues before the pandemic, but certainly during the pandemic, and the economic issues that are related to that. And so certainly, please let us know how we can help out in terms of any kind of drug addiction issues throughout the region that may impact Encinitas, and that we could, you know, help out, make sure that we're addressing our policies or addressing this head-on, so that, you know, we're helping our residents as much as possible. So please do let us bring us into the loop on anything that you need help with.
Yeah, I feel like I have a lot of support from the city and from the residents also. And so it's a huge problem, especially fentanyl. It is just a very dangerous drug, and so we're trying to get a handle on it, but it's a big challenge, not just for North Coastal Encinitas, but for this entire region, the Southern California region. It's just a dangerous, powerful drug, so.
Right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Captain Taft. Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make a few other comments and just direct to this program. I do support the extension of this program, and I think that, you know, we didn't know when we first kind of looked at this program that the pandemic was going to happen, and that this program was going to be even more of a solution for us than we were thinking at that time. But, you know, this was a really unique program, which was tailored to, you know, to the folks that are just starting to kind of fall in hard times and perhaps fall into that cycle of homelessness. And, you know, here we're able to offer an opportunity to, perhaps somebody lost their job, or they're sleeping in their car, they can't make the rent, and they're sleeping in their car in our city, and here's an opportunity to have a safe parking program where they can safely sleep in their car, temporary option, and also, you know, round that out with services that will connect them to housing, connect them with the services that they needed. And this is a state grant that actually pays for it, so the city wasn't paying for it. And thanks to JFS, Jewish Family Services of San Diego, and the Leach Tag Foundation, this has been a huge success for our city at a time when we most needed it. Most of the participants in this program are from Encinitas. You know, there are a lot of folks that have been talking about the families of some of our school-aged children at USD or San De Gito Union High School District that have participated in this program. You know, it is a much-needed program. It's obviously, when you look at the data, it has been successful. It's not... There are multiple reasons why people are unhoused and are food insecure in our city, and so there's not one thing that's going to solve this problem. But certainly, when you look at the unique instance of somebody who is starting to kind of have a hard time, economic hard time, and needs a hand up, this is a program that's helping and it's working. So I definitely support this program because it's successful, it's funded by a state grant, and also look forward to implementing our action plan, which is going to look at all of the other reasons why people are unhoused and food insecure in our city. And again, even when we start to look at those, Encinitas can't solve every problem, but we're going to make an effort to try to solve some of these problems, and I think it makes a big difference for us in our city to try to tackle this. We can't just bury our head in the sand and pretend it doesn't exist. We need to step up and put in place some action to make a difference. So thank you, and I will be supportive of this item tonight, and Madam Mayor, I'll move it whenever it's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. We'll just take that as a motion, and then now I'll call on Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I do appreciate all of the public comment. I am happy to see that this program has a lot of support, and I might go so far as it seems, it feels to me like there's more support now than there has been. It's not 100%, but...
I probably spoke already, because the council's talking about it.
I think somebody needs to go on mute.
Yeah, I think it's Nancy Hardwick, but I can't control her, so maybe IT can mute.
Okay. So...
Wait, just hold on a second, Councilmember.
Okay.
Could IT please mute Nancy? Or Nancy, could you please mute yourself? Okay, there we go.
Thank you very much. So I'm happy for the support I'm seeing from the community, and I think sometimes when you establish a new program, there's a lot of uncertainty. In the case of our community, I think that was the case. And I think we've really worked well through a lot of the questions and a lot of the uncertainty, and we're in the position where this is one, I feel it's been successful, one lane that we have available to us to help attack the homelessness problem. I do want to, and I like to rest on data and facts, and I've just been kind of drilling down to try to figure out what's the data here. And what I've learned is that 68% of the people who have been involved in this program have been placed back into permanent housing, that 50% of the participants, this is at a moment in time last week, have jobs, but they can't find housing. I've learned that 92% of the participants are first-time homeless, and an interesting fact in addition is that 46% of the people participating are 60 years plus years old, and that indicates to me a vulnerable population. I have a big concern about our moratorium being lifted on evictions federally, state, and we don't know how extensive, but as it is right now, that is supposed to be lifted June 30th. And I think we need to be prepared to help our people address the consequences of what some evictions might happen as a result of that. So I think we're entering a very vulnerable time that we never would have predicted we would be in, but here we are, and now is not the time to not move forward with a successful program that helps to capture those people who might just temporarily have found themselves to be without housing. And so I am also in support of continued funding.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Crans?
Thank you. I've recently been very encouraged by actions that were taken at the County Board of Supervisors. They are investing significant resources in North County regional efforts to address homelessness, 25 million, I believe, is what it is. And the chief administrative officer is putting together a proposal to bring back to the Board of Supervisors to attack this problem. Recently, the City of San Diego signed a contract and is working with Community Solutions. That's a program that Roseanne Hagerty, a MacArthur grant recipient of $100 million for her work nationwide, has... will now be working with the City of San Diego to end veteran homelessness. So my hope is that the county can take advantage of the presence of Community Solutions and that the North County Solution might engage them, because what we're seeing, I think, is, especially anecdotally in the newspaper, we see reports from both Carlsbad and Oceanside of significant homelessness problems that they've been dealing with, and they have made significantly more investments in trying to address those problems. And I think the conversation around homelessness is very important, but this idea that this particular program, the Safe Parking Program, in some way exacerbated the homelessness problem here in Encinitas, I think, is fallacious. So it is my hope that we can, you know, continue to work with the county and the jurisdictions surrounding us to address the homelessness issue regionally, and that we can keep a successful program like this available for those people who are, you know, one step away from being without shelter. And so I too will be supporting it. I think that there's a lot of testimony, both in writing and on the Zoom tonight, that, you know, lacks any evidence of causation. And so when we hear the fears about walking in the park and other things, I'm not going to say that's not real. I understand that there are people that are fearful, but there are other issues that we need to deal with, and it has nothing to do with the Safe Parking Program. Finally, I would like to thank the Leach Tag Foundation for stepping up and being willing to host this program for an additional six months. They never had to do this to begin with, and they took a lot of abuse... They never had to do this to begin with, and they took a lot of abuse, and they continue to be abused in social media circles. And I think it's totally unfair, but for their willingness to continue this program while we work to find another location, I greatly appreciate their efforts. So I don't know if anybody seconded Joe's motion, but I'm happy to do that. And my hope is that we can continue to work with the county to address the really significant issue of homelessness.
Okay, thank you. Yep, that's the second of his motion. Councilmember Henze.
Not too much more to add, except for my wholehearted support of this program. Just to acknowledge that even though this is a temporary extension of this station, I hope that we can have a permanent fixture of a safe parking lot as part of what our city does to do our part and alleviate the suffering of those who live without shelter on our streets here. I would like to clarify that while we have served folks in this safe parking lot who are not whose most recent home was not Encinitas, that this lot was also meant to serve people who work in Encinitas. And as one of the speakers pointed out, and Joy also mentioned, that 50% of the participants have jobs, most likely here in Encinitas, and just don't have the gas to drive somewhere else, don't have the money to have the gas to drive somewhere else to find a place where there might be more affordable shelter. So really, this this facility is meant to serve those who live, who work, who have children in our schools, who attend schools here themselves, or attend churches here in our city. And so it's not just confined to those who were most recently homeless here in our affluent city. So just to add my support to it and to thank Captain Taft and Jennifer Gates and the folks at JFS and Leach Tag for really showing us some of the best parts of our city and, you know, using a lot of your own will to make this happen for as long as we have. So thank you.
Well, thank you. So I'll follow the support expressed by all of my council colleagues and also express my support for this critical program. It's I really appreciate the callers who phoned in to continue to support it and to send emails. And and just, I really want to echo what Teresa Beauchamp said about this is one prong of many, that when people are facing the substantial uncertainty and insecurity related to housing, there are many prongs that that are needed. And we this is one that we have been doing and should keep doing. And so the the Captain Taft, our Sheriff's Captain, it's just I really want to reemphasize what he said, which is there are no dots to connect. So he looks every single month at the crime statistics and he analyzes them with that in mind. And he says there's there are no dots to connect. I think that that's really a tremendously telling statement. And so it's important that we get the real information out there. You know, there can be a lot of misinformation and and then it's propagated. And so there can there can become a perception of something that that really is just not the case. And and I mean, as my colleagues have pointed out, you know, we 50% are seniors, 50% have jobs. A lot of people, when we were talking about equity in this city and we're thinking about what are the categories? People of color, people who live in poverty, people who are older, seniors. You know, these, we need to help people as as part of the core of what we do in this city and all cities do. I think there's just no question that homelessness is rising across the state and really across the nation. But coastal communities like ours and inland communities, it really is everywhere. And we all have to step up and do a little more, because it's obvious that not doing things is not solving the problem or helping people. So as we all need to lean into this. And so I'm so proud to represent a city and serve with council members and work with professional staff and have community partners like the Leach Tag Foundation, who raised their hand and volunteered when they didn't have to in the face of tremendous heat. And that we have Jewish Family Service, which does unbelievable work to help people in this county. And they face so much heat too for the various things they do and the social services they provide. But we but we are doing something really good here, and I feel very proud of that. And I want to say thank you to all those partners who are making that happen. So let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to say about that. Yeah, so I do hope that we can find another location for this that's appropriate. I have no doubt that we'll be able to do that. And and I'm grateful for the additional six months that we'll be able to make a really smooth transition here. So so thank you very much. And I think, does the Deputy Mayor have his hand back up or is it up again? Okay, go ahead with your comment, and then we'll vote and move on past the consent calendar.
Yeah, very briefly, I wanted to just mention that there were some comments tonight about the growing van life population that we have in our community. Those are not homeless people. Those are people that have chosen to live in a van. And I am seeing an uptick in parking of these vans in the railroad corridor. And I appreciate Captain Taft and your team making a sweep to address that particular issue. I'm not sure what needs to be done, but I I think that it is something that we should be taking up as a city council, because we do have the ordinance, which prohibits sleeping in vehicles. So, you know, it's, I think, time to address the issue in a way that will address some of the concerns that we're hearing. So at a future date, I would appreciate having the opportunity to have it on the agenda to talk about.
Okay, well, with that, let's go ahead and vote on the motion on the table from Councilmember Moscow, seconded from the Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Lines?
Yes.
Councilmember Moscow? Councilmember Moscow, yeah, okay, there you go. Deputy Mayor Krantz?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. That takes us out of the consent calendar and to item 10A. And we'd have no speakers on item 10A or 10B.
Okay. I can go ahead and move approval on 10A unless there's a staff report that needs to be given.
Not on 10A, but on 10B, yes.
Okay. So 10A, let me just announce it for the record here. So 10A is public hearing to repeal the group home permit ordinance and reinstate language entitled 29 and 30 of the Encinitas Municipal Code and other provisions. So I'll move approval on that.
Okay, and we'll just note that there are no speakers, so we open the public hearing and close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And is Councilmember Krantz your hand back up? Okay, go ahead.
I did want to say that I supported this ordinance and still do. And it's only because of the threat from HCD that I intend to vote to repeal it today. There are some valid concerns of people in neighborhoods of surrounding the group homes that we have in Encinitas. And if it weren't for the fact that there is still pending litigation that hasn't been resolved, I think that, you know, there might be a different approach that I would take on this item. But because it turns out that there still is a ways to go on the litigation, and there's still, since that's federal litigation, and there's still a possibility of some state litigation, I think that the appropriate thing to do is to just repeal and revisit when the litigation has been finalized. So to those people who have brought to our attention the issues surrounding group homes in your neighborhood, I am still sensitive to that and look to look forward to addressing your concerns at the appropriate time.
Okay, Councilmember Moscow?
Madam Mayor, I'm not going to repeat what Deputy Mayor Krantz said. I agree with him, and I would just highlight what he said and and just add that. So we're back to square one, which is, you know, what what was said previously about, you know, when when folks would come and say that, you know, that they've had that they've witnessed, you know, loud noises or or trash or drug use or anything like that. There are laws in the books for that. And so definitely, this doesn't mean that we're not enforcing the law. And so definitely, if if there's anything like that in your area that you that you you see, please do report it to the Sheriff's Department or call the city, and we'll deal with it. But the action that we're taking now has nothing to do with enforcing the law that exists today.
Okay, good. Does anybody, did somebody second my motion?
Not yet.
I'll second your motion.
So that was Councilmember Henze, so let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Lines?
Yes.
Councilmember Moscow? Said yes. Deputy Mayor Krantz?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
Deputy, are you not able to? Sorry.
No, we're not always there, are you?
That that's interesting. I'm not sure why that that happens.
I think it's just a little delay start, and it's only one word, so it like doesn't get started. But but you say yes, so we see your mouth.
All right, that takes us to item 10B.
Okay, do we let's do we have we you said we have no public comments on 10B?
We have no public speakers.
Okay, but Jennifer Gates said that there was a staff report she wanted to give?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. So the second item for public hearing tonight on the repeals is to consider the adoption of ordinance number 2021-07 to repeal the ordinance number 2020-09, density bonus amendment, and reinstating the zoning code language existing prior to the adoption of ordinance number 2020-09. And for the public to remember the the history on this item, on December 16th of 2020, the City Council had adopted ordinance number 2020-09 and amended the chapter 3016020C of the Encinitas Municipal Code. And on December 16th, 2021, the City of Encinitas received an advice letter from HCD that objected to the new ordinance. During HCD's review of our six-cycle housing element, the city received a comment letter on February 4th, asserting that the density bonus ordinance passed in December of 2020 is in conflict with state law. It states that the city must modify the program 2D to immediately remove or suspend the ordinance. And that to apply current state density bonus law under the city's density bonus ordinance is appropriately amended to be in compliance. A notice of violation was also sent to the city on March 25th, 2021, reiterating the concerns expressed in the HCD's February 4th letter and stating that HCD may notify the Office of Attorney General when a city takes actions that violate the government code. Based on advice from legal counsel, staff had recommended that program 2D of the housing element be amended as recommended by HCD, given HCD's view that the ordinance as adopted did not comply with state law. On April 7th of 2021, City Council adopted the six-house, six-cycle housing element, which included an objective in program 2D to repeal ordinance 2020-09 within three months. On May 6, 2020, the Planning Commission discussed repealing the ordinance number 2020-09 in its entirety and recommended that the City Council should instead discuss and consider the merits of different components and determine if they want to defend them. During the discussion, individual planning commissioners particularly expressed interest in retaining the use of net acreage, the 39% density bonus for moderate income housing, and the 41% density bonus for very low and low income housing. Ordinance number 2020-09 is not yet in effect because it has not yet been approved by the California Coastal Commission, which extended its review time to March of 2022. Thus, changes made by the ordinance number 2020-09 have not been implemented by the city. Staff does have one additional recommended environmental consideration to be added to the ordinance that is currently stated on the screen. And thus provides an additional exemption for CEQA and stating that the proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA because CEQA does not apply to projects which the city disapproves or rejects. And this staff is proposing to add to the ordinance as a fifth exemption. Staff is recommending that City Council introduce number 2021-07, titled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Encinitas, California, repealing ordinance number 2020-09 relating to density bonus in its entirety and reinstating zoning code language existing prior to adoption of the ordinance number 2020-09. Staff and special counsel Barbara Couts are available to answer any questions. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. I will move approval. Oh, I'll move approval and Councilmember Henze.
Just had a couple of questions. I just finished watching the Planning Commission deliberation about it. Barbara, and this one's for you. And it it seemed that when the Planning Commission deliberated this, there was the question as to whether HCD was going to threaten to revoke other cities' housing elements that were continuing to use net instead of gross. Since that meeting, have you heard about HCD taking action against any other cities for that distinction? You're muted.
There was an article in the Orange County Register, my my source, which said that HCD had sent a notice of violation to the City of Anaheim, which apparently has a similar ordinance. The article also listed about another eight cities or eight jurisdictions that had similar ordinances that had not received notices of violation. But apparently, a letter was sent to the City of Anaheim. And my source for that is the is is the Register. I don't have a independent confirmation.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question that I have is that between, you know, because we didn't have the Coastal Commission approval of this ordinance that we had passed before the deadline, now we're going to have projects that are going to actually be approved based on the state law of 50% density bonus and gross density. So in approving these projects or reviewing these projects in that way, does this set a negative precedent for us if at a later time we try to say, oh, we want to go back to 39 or 41% density bonus?
Yeah, well, let's see. Yes, because of SB 330, though, not because of density bonus law. There are the provisions of SB 330 that are called the Housing Crisis Act of 2019 prevent a city, at least until 2025, for doing any reductions in density, taking any actions that would reduce density on any site. There's a proposal in the legislature, SB 8, to extend the Housing Crisis Act till 2030. So but as long as the Housing Crisis Act is in effect, once once this ordinance is repealed, the city really could not and 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 the council begins using gross density and 50% and allows 50% density bonus, it seems to me it would likely violate the Housing Crisis Act for the city to go back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lines?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take the opportunity to throw out an idea, and I know there's a motion already on the table, but I'm I've given it a lot of thought. And I I feel like what we've done recently, we thought we were doing right. We thought that we were acting in good faith and understanding what the state was asking for us to do. And that was back when we created this ordinance. I've looked at the wording and, well, I've kind of assessed the wording of the letter that the that HCD sent. And I realized that it doesn't really shed any light on what we did wrong. It was just you did this wrong. And then when we asked for a clarifying meeting with them, they didn't respond. And to this day, we still have not been able to have any dialogue to explain to us what we did wrong. And I feel like we're in a spiral of just not understanding. And we risk continuing to misunderstand until we can build a rapport where we get clarity on exactly what they're expecting. And I think it's almost our duty to insist on it, because honestly, I'm confused. I think a lot of citizens, when they drill down onto into the details, they're they're just like, we don't know. We thought we were doing it right. I even sense that from the Planning Commission and from the outcome of the Planning Commission meeting, where they're, you know, they're kind of throwing their hands up in the air and kicking the can down the road. So I I wonder if now is a good opportunity. Since we have 90 days, that would put us at the beginning of July to insist, to request, to make it imperative to meet with HCD and build a rapport. And I know we've tried that in the past, but the reason it resonates for me right now is I was sitting in on a an Institute for Local Government Training Session, it would have been a couple of months ago, where HCD was talking to all the cities throughout the state, all the leaders throughout the state. And the Director of HCD, Gustavo Valasquez, honestly said, we are here to help you succeed. And I looked up their mission, and their mission says the same. And I looked up their mission and the mission says the same thing. They are here to help us succeed. And if they can't help us succeed. You know, that's a failure. I think we want to succeed too. And this isn't black or white. This isn't. We want affordable housing. We want the same things. We want affordable housing. This isn't you either get housing, you get housing or and you lose your community character. It's not like that. It's not black and white. We can have. Affordable housing and we can preserve our community character. And I think they want that too. So I'm not, I'm not convinced we have enough information to say. This is going to be the right decision, even though it seems like it is. But I just don't understand the background behind. What's going to be our next failure? You know, I and I think it just. There's a solution that's outside of the box here a little bit. And since we have ninety days, I'm wondering if there's any interest in discussing. That we take this moment to reach out and get more information about. Why net versus gross? You know, why? Why are we being asked some of these things?
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Well, I would certainly support taking a pause. I would I would like to see some legal analysis of the arguments that are being made for. By the lawyers for. E R R D. And you know, I'd like to remind my colleagues that. This started as in cycle five where HCD directed that we. Implement a program three C. And it was. In in order to address the constraints that HCD interpreted from Prop A. And we were given a couple of choices. One was to go to the voters and amend Prop A to make it possible for the city council to take action that would. Allow compliance of housing element law. And the other alternative was to go to the courts and ask for declaratory relief. And in a four to one vote with me on the one side, the choice was made to hire the attorneys and go to court. And you know, when we were last talking about this particular issue, the big, the big concern was the cost of litigation. And we do already have a lawsuit. And I think that we would be well served to make an effort to amend that lawsuit, which is with HCD. To include these questions related to the density bonus. In the declaratory relief and ask a judge to interpret our ordinance and and whatever concerns that that HCD might have. And so I know that. We've filed the briefs for our litigation and I believe the court calendar has them on next week. And so we may be too late for that, but I do think that it would be. Appropriate to attempt to get some. Declaratory relief on on this particular issue related to this density bonus law that we've adopted. I think this net versus gross issue is is not something that just the city of Encinitas is going to have to deal with. Clearly, based upon Barbara's. Information from the Orange County Register. Which you know, is is interesting in and of itself that that there are other jurisdictions that are going to be dealing with this and that maybe we can find common cause and. Work to get this added to the existing litigation and get the question answered instead of just rolling over and and. You know, repealing this. I would also point out that we just were served with some papers. And are being sued on this particular action. So the the idea that we could avoid litigation by taking this action tonight. That's that's being required by HCD is proving to be untrue. So. It's all a very unfortunate situation and and I think that getting getting this before a judge would be in the best interests of our community. And it's our, I think it's our duty to work to make that happen.
If I could add something. I realize I misspoke before. The letter to Anaheim was about their group home ordinance, not about their density bonus ordinance. In terms of density bonus, I'm aware of one other city that did what. That did what Encinitas did in terms of adopting a forty percent density bonus rather than, you know, be. Last year. And that city has received a letter of technical advice from. From HCD saying that HCD considers their ordinance to be to violate density bonus law.
I'll just jump in here. Thank you for clarifying that, Barbara. So I think it's important to like really orient ourselves about where we are and what we're doing and why. So there's just absolutely no question that the state, the state legislature and the state regulatory agency of HCD. Is interested in removing any barriers to the production of housing of all types. So they are interested in density. They're not only interested in affordable housing, they're interested in density. And the reason for that is that density creates smaller units that are more affordable by design. They're more likely to be in urban areas where you have a shorter commute time. So you're not sprawling out into the back country. This is for climate reasons. This is also for the realities of the homeless crisis and the affordability crisis. The number of people who spend seventy percent of their income on housing because there's not enough supply of housing. So I think that remembering that the policy considerations, the why that you were asking council member lines. Is very clearly laid out in a number of different things. I mean, there are currently. Nine different housing bills that will further streamline and promote density. So in the city of Encinitas, we're having a conversation about density. Being ruining of community character that really doesn't correspond with the conversation being had at the state level at all. And and I think that there's just absolutely no question that HCD is going to reject any suggestion. That we could get away with forty percent or anything else, forty nine percent, forty three percent. Or or calculating it on anything that we want to make up as our own way of doing an analysis. That the the reality is that that they that bill, which was from Lorena Gonzalez. Was designed to create fifty percent density bonuses so that there would be more density. And so the the we were on notice of that by people like, for example, Circulate San Diego and the development community that sent us letters. As well as HCD saying, we, we, this is a notice of violation. So so I I think to me, if those of you on my my council colleagues who might decide to support this. I think that really you're burying your head in the sand if you think that there's any way that we're going to somehow persuade HCD that this is going to be something they should accept. I think that the reason they're not responding to us is they basically roll their eyes and say, we've already talked to you about this. The state policy should be super clear to you guys, like what is your problem? And so we've been through a full lawsuit with with HCD where we ordered up, ended up in with a court order to adopt a housing element in a hundred and twenty days. And so here we are in the sixth cycle. We don't have to upstone any additional parcels, which was like truthfully amazing. And we're dealing with programs and policies. And we're doing this right now because we don't want to get into the same situation we were in before. I think we need to really recognize that if we want to avoid. Ongoing lawsuits that we can't win, the legal bills associated with that, the the cross on our back with HCD and us being in the crosshairs because we're. Not getting out underneath from underneath our microscope. We're not getting closer to an eight year cycle. We're still going to be on the four year cycles. None of that serves us in the city. I think that we we know we receive a tremendous amount of pressure. To 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 was to resist density. And you see it when you watch the planning commission meetings and we see it when we get the emails and there's so much opposition to housing in this community. But the reality is that housing is the way that we do provide a vital community. We provide housing at all income levels. We provide for people who don't have a way to afford the one point three million dollar median family home price in the city. And so and we have to really be honest about the fact that if we care about fighting climate change, we we have to be able to have infill development. So when that when we're saying we reject this, we know HCD has told us this is a notice of violation. You have to rescind it. And we decide here at the city council, we're not going to do that. We're not going to get our sixth cycle approved on time. And we're going to end up back in that exact same cycle that we were in before. And that just does not serve us. I think that we're so much better off as a city if we can. Do the hard work, make that hard choice and say, yes, we will follow the state law. We recognize that we don't like parts of it, that it doesn't make sense to us how you would use gross instead of net. But we still recognize the supremacy of state law over local law. And we work to do things like like meet arena requirements by actually building an affordable housing project. By prioritizing that, by finding a spot for it, by getting the political and social will to say, we're going to actually have deed restricted. Units in this city, but to resist this or to not repeal this tonight would is such a mistake. When you look at this strategically of where we're trying to go in the city to be compliant and then chart our own path. We can do it, but we have to do it. We can't just go back into the legal quagmire that we were in before. So I really urge my colleagues to stay the course of where we are of recit to follow through on the rescission of this. To move forward, I think Joy, your council member line's suggestion of trying to create a better relationship with HCD is really important. I think we do have a relationship that's very involved. I mean, certainly there's a lot of contact. And if you want to be able to sit down with them as a new council member, I think we could organize that. So that you can hear directly from them what their position is and why they're requiring things. But but this the notion that we somehow don't have that relationship is just, I mean, there's just so much contact between the state and the city, our city planners, our outside attorneys. And so I'd like to rope you into that, but but I really hope that we that that a majority of this council doesn't. Say that we're we're going to just fall back into the into the position that we were in in the last cycle where we spent all of our time and political capital and money on this topic. And we lost. And we lost a lot for doing that. And we just, I just think it's that is just not the way we should go here. Councilmember Moscow.
This is when we when we decided to kind of really focus and and focus on. Certification in the six thousand cycle and we had to assess where we were at and what we needed to do to get. Across the line. This was one of the items that gave me the most heartburn. You know, changing and course correcting on this gave me a lot of heartburn. But you know, I just want to focus us on the practical. The practical path ahead. You know, when we looked at the density bonus law and we looked at, you know, designing, you know. Our own kind of program locally and getting it in before the the new year. We knew at the time what the what the new law said. And as the mayor said, we had people that reached out to us and told us what that new law said and then no uncertain terms, but. We gave it a good try to put together a program that that we believed would meet the spirit of the law. Which was, you know, the the less than fifty percent. HCD took the very strict construction of that bill. And said, no, you know, it's it's either you incentivize even higher than fifty percent or you default to fifty percent. And I think that that to to kind of. To there are lots of arguments that that I think that we can make and deputy mayor talked about three C, which I think is is something that I want to defend, make making sure that that. We're not seeing the evisceration of our voters' right to to decide density in our city. Vis a vis election is something that I want to defend and something I want to work hard on and put money toward. But you know, defending something that we knew wasn't a go from the beginning. And 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 now, you know. It it's just, it's it's something that from a practical standpoint, it doesn't make sense. You know, when the gross versus net, you know, conversation, yes, I want to be at net. I don't know how we got to gross. It 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 boggles my mind and it bothers me that somehow. You know, we're stuck with a policy, a precedent that this city council didn't set. And I've said this before. You know, the policy should be set at the city council level. We can go over the history as to why we got to gross instead of net. Change in law, you know, a different city attorney advised staff that it should be gross. They went with gross. They started approving projects with gross analysis. They started advising with gross analysis. We started seeing projects approved by the planning commission with gross analysis. We've approved projects with gross analysis. You know, it's difficult to to switch gears and and not think that. That precedent is going to have a problem with us. Again, I want to defend what is solid and firm and what we what we can win on. And that's three C and a whole host of other issues. But you know, getting back to. Net, it just does not seem to be a path to get back to net. And so I think that that, you know, while this gives me a lot of heartburn, I I just, you know, I understand where council member lines is that I do. Agree that that we've had a lot of conversations with HCD. And I don't know if staff wants to to fill in the gaps with any conversations that we've had here. So. But this isn't just kind of a wing and a prayer, thinking that, you know, we'll take these steps and and hopefully we'll be. You know, comporting with what HCD has told us. They've told us in no unclear, you know, in clear terms what what's necessary and you know. And we've, we've, we've moved in a direction. I think in a very solid, methodical fashion, we've moved in a direction where we need to move. But there are still arguments out there. As Deputy Mayor Crans has said, there's a, there's a, there's a lawsuit, there's a case out there. And we are arguing where 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 we need to argue and where where our values are at stake. And where we we feel like the money is well spent, the taxpayers' money is well spent and we can defend the city and we have a chance of success. But we ought not get bogged down in 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 arguments that we can't win. And that we were just putting putting money, good money after bad money. And so. You know, as 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 hard as this is for me to say. I will be supporting repeal of this because I just don't think, well, I I think that 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 I liked where we were going. I just don't think that we were on solid ground and I and I think we knew that in the beginning. And so I don't want to compound the problem here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henze.
I will just add to the voices that support repeal tonight because. We've been down this road before and I don't see a productive ending if we if we choose to uphold the planning commission's recommendation. That we still have to wait on coastal commission approval, which means that we'll be approving projects at fifty percent. With net gross with gross from now until coastal decides that we can implement that. And we have no reason to believe that coastal would uphold our our local ordinance. And so I think state law with SB three thirty holds us to having to actually. Not downzone, which we would do if we don't approve these projects. I know we have a lawsuit we're faced with now from one side of the argument, but should we not repeal? I know we would face lawsuits from the other side. And either way it goes, it ends up being really expensive. And I think even if we're able to limit the density by nine percent. We still will be responsible for creating the sidewalks that are going to get those students to school and. Enhancing the roads so that they're safer for the for the increased amount of people that we have living here. And so for every dollar that we spend on a lawsuit that we're not, we're not going to win, we're going to lose out on preparing our community to be the best version of itself as we do grow. So. Planning Commissioner Doyle said that, you know, he's not happy about this, but he understands the position we're in between the rock and the hard place. And he said that he hopes city council repeals this at last resort. And I really do feel that we're at last resort. We're in, we're under a ticking clock to be able to to get our housing element adopted. And I think we have to be really careful about what it is that we push back on and what we don't. And this is one of those that. We've tried, we've tried to negotiate, we've tried to seek a meeting, we've written a really thorough letter explaining the reasons why we made this choice. And it's all been to no avail. So rather than continue down a path that I don't see an end for with this with this ordinance, I'll I'll vote to repeal tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lines.
I just want to follow up by saying I don't want it to be misunderstood that I am in support of litigation or lawsuit. All I was saying is that. I feel as though a lot can be achieved by continuing our relationship building with HCD. I believe that we are not totally in sync. And I'm hearing my my fellow council members say that. They understand it better than I do, perhaps because of the experience. However, I think there's maybe some benefit to. I think there's maybe some benefit to the new person in the room and and what I what I see coming in not having the baggage of the years of experience with this. And what I see is I fear we're going to continue to stumble over obstacles we don't know are in our way until we can understand better and build a rapport. There's nothing better than being across the table from someone to do that. And I'm willing to let let Mayor Blakespear rope me into that. If I know that uh Jody Hubbard went to meet up in Sacramento, um, and I believe Councilmember Henze did as well. And it would make sense for me to follow in Jody's footsteps there, um, if there's an opportunity to uh continue to build rapport. I I honestly think it's a better way forward than any other action that might go into the courts or into litigation. Or at least it's, it seems to me to be the the right way forward now. So I don't want you to be confused, uh, anyone to be confused that I'm supporting litigation because I'm not. I do want our housing element to move forward. I understand that what we do at every one of our council meetings, uh, dealing with density bonuses is important. And uh, I don't want to, I don't want to do, I don't, I I'm certainly not my intention to um derail any of that because I'm I'm very much in support of it. Uh, but I would um, raise my hand to help, help us build our rapport in uh in hopes of of improving it.
Well, thank you. We will definitely take you up on that. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to point out that uh, far from having my head in the sand, I've been at this a long time and been around the block quite a bit, quite a few times. Um, and I don't like ceding my authority to a state bureaucracy. You're suggesting that their reading of the law is is uh the final answer, and I'm saying that as an attorney, you know that the arbiter of of the fact is the judge and and that there, when there are questions of law, you go before a judge. That's what we're doing with our declaratory relief processes. We're asking for a judge to to rule on the particular question of preemption. And so, you know, it's it's uh, it's unfortunate that when we're trying to fight for something, let's 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 review what we've done. In December, we adopted this ordinance unanimously. And with a letter from HCD, we're ready to repeal it. And I think that it is unfortunate that we're doing that because we adopted it in December for good reasons. And so uh, I also would point out that we we've not been sued on this. We were, we've not been, the what we were sued over was not having a housing element and uh, we now have one. And we should have a sixth cycle, um, and we should take this question to the courts. But I can see where this is going and uh, I will once again not support the repeal. And uh, it would be my desire that we continue to work um to get this question before judge.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and and is there a second?
No, there was not.
I can second that.
And Mayor Blakespear, was your motion, did it include the recommended language from staff that was added this evening?
Yes, it includes the staff recommendation.
Great, thank you. All right, are you ready to vote?
Yes, we are.
And then we'll just note, like, just one more time for the record that the public hearing is open and closed. There were no public speakers. Uh, Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Lines?
Yes.
Councilmember Moscow? Said yes. Deputy Mayor Cr- Deputy Mayor Krantz?
No.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
Motion carries with Deputy Mayor Krantz voting no.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now we're on to item ten C, which is our final report on the mobility enhancement study on Rancho Santa Fe Road. And how many public speakers do we have on this item?
We have four.
Okay, great. Let's get the staff report first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Abe Bandigan here, City Traffic Engineer. Do I have my presentation pulled up? Yes, thank you. Let me share my screen. Okay, do we have it? Everybody sees it?
Yes, we do. We see it.
Okay, thank you. So um, this is the Rancho Santa Fe uh Mobility Enhancement Study. A little bit of a history and background on this. Many of you probably know that we have a lot of stop signs um on the corridor of Rancho Santa Fe north of Encinas Boulevard intersection. Uh, these stop signs went in uh years and years ago. I'm I'm, I think they're more than like twenty years ago or uh or even more than that. Uh, these were installed at that point along Rancho Santa Fe for the purpose of preventing cut through traffic. And um, at that point again, to provide easier access from side streets, allowing them to make more convenient turns onto Rancho Santa Fe. During the past couple of years with increasing volume of traffic everywhere, including in our own city, public uh were concerned with the increased uh sheer volume of traffic and the extra delays and congestions that was being experienced, especially during peak periods on Rancho Santa Fe. Uh, early twenty nineteen, a Rancho Santa Fe Task Force uh was formed uh by the residents um of the Oliverinheim Community and and the Rancho Santa Fe Community to address the traffic concerns. The goal was to uh be able to find a way to uh improve the congestion of traffic, improve the level minimize the level of congestion and improve uh the situation of traffic there. In September of twenty nineteen, uh, we were directed by city council uh to work with the task force and um do um modifications to improve the situation and uh enhance traffic and minimize the level of congestion there. In December of twenty nineteen, city council funded fifty thousand dollars for a study to identify what is causing the congestion and uh improve mobility. Uh, we had a a lot of meetings with the task force, with the consultant and with the with the uh city staff, uh also with the community. There were a few uh big level uh big group community meetings that their findings of the study was presented to them. Uh, and also the final result, final findings of the study was presented to the city's uh traffic commission in March. Uh, this is the corridor that was studied, as I mentioned, uh, north of Encinas Boulevard, all the way to the edge of the city limit on um Cali Acervo. The study process, as was defined in the original scope that was approved by council, the the volume, the baseline volume uh of of traffic and the travel time data was collected along the stretch to find out what the what the current travel time is at that point. Um, the existing scenario was modeled um to be able to then model, to be modified and new scenarios be evaluated from that. Multiple scenarios were developed by the consultant and uh by the help of the community. All these scenarios were modeled and the travel times, the anticipated travel time uh based on those uh different scenarios were evaluated. The feasibility and cost of these scenarios, since this was just a modeling and mathematical analysis, uh, there was no uh evaluation of cost about those different scenarios that were analyzed. And there was also no feasibility, no uh physical feasibility analysis uh to assure uh all these scenarios are a hundred percent feasible. So the engineer's judgment was used to uh make assumptions with regards to feasibility of these scenarios. Uh, there were also a lot of other potential improvements that were identified along this, along the process of this study that I will talk about. All these uh models and all these uh potential improvements were presented to the city council, to the uh community and to the task force during those meeting at uh multiple different meetings. Uh, this is a summary of um the different scenarios that was modeled. As you can see, there are eight different alternatives. Uh, and there is also another, the ninth alternative that was, as I'll explain, the task force preferred scenario. These uh acronyms that you see here, TS stands for a traffic signal. AWS stands for an always stop control, meaning every leg would have a stop control. RA is a roundabout. Um, and the SSS means the side of streets uh stop sign. So meaning Rancho Santa Fe is not a stop, only the minor street that intersects with Rancho Santa Fe is a stop. So as you can see, all these uh different scenarios are are different from each other with regards to the type of traffic control that is that is on them during the modeling, that that was on them during the modeling process. Uh, the existing one, we have two signals, one at uh Vingadala Pasta, one one at Encinas Boulevard, and all the other uh seven intersections have always stop controls. So these were modeled and um uh, this is a very, the world, there, I'm not sure uh if you've had the chance to check the appendices on the report, but there were a lot of data coming out of those models. This is one of the important results that shows the number of seconds that it will take to go through the corridor. Again, based on the model, these are not real collected surveys. They're not travel times that were surveyed because these are, these are not situations that we have out there. These are just based on model results that were calibrated, obviously with the help of the community. Uh, so we have relatively good confidence with with the with the numbers that you see here. So for example, uh, the nine seventy-four that you see in the first box is the number of seconds that it takes during um AM peak for uh going through the whole corridor in southbound direction, which is the higher volume during morning. And similar, the eleven twenty-five seconds is uh northbound peak where to go from Encinas all the way to Cali Acervo. And these other numbers that you see is the changes that would happen to the travel time if we make those uh modifications for each alternative. Uh, as you can see, uh, the majority of these scenarios are showing, almost all of them are showing some level of improvements to the travel time, some a lot more, some somewhat less. And the last column is uh the results of the scenario that was preferred by the task force. Um, other potential safety and mobility improvements that were identified include um painting the crosswalks there uh at certain locations that uh we can benefit from uh high visibility crossing. We don't have many um continental marked crosswalks there. There was a mid-block crossing that was identified by this study. That is a good location that has merit and we can um mark that, add the improvements needed and add the RFP. We can do race crossings. There were concerns about the off-peak period where the volume is not that high. Uh, we have some speeding going on there, so we have the opportunity to have some race crossings with some flashing beacons. Uh, some shoulder enhancements currently we have, uh, we don't have a sidewalk. There is a trail, a trail lady to plan for the east side, but on the west side, we don't have anything. Uh, we have the idea of narrowing down the lanes on Rancho Santa Fe and moving the lanes toward east and open up a big uh chunk of space on the west side of the road that can be utilized by a lot of different modes of transportation, by horses, by pedestrians, by bikes. Uh, and we'll we'll benefit from the traffic calming effect of the lane narrowing too. The modification of the Vingadala Pasta and and the Cali Acervo uh that intersection, uh, we have a strapping plan designed for it. It's it's a thirty percent right now, but we think the intersection can benefit from that uh design and the flow of traffic would be way better after implementation. And once all these uh other improvements uh have gone in, the ones other than the intersection control modifications, we can conduct another speed survey and see if we can lower um the speed limit on the roadway. Uh, hopefully, I'm I'm very optimistic. We have been successful previously. Uh, so um, this is, this is a sample of uh what we think about modifying um the cross section of the road in the future. So we can narrow down the loads, the lanes from the current thirteen, fourteen feet wide lanes that we have and move them to the edge of the easternly edge. On the east side, we'll hopefully at some point soon, we'll have the trail and we'll have around seven to ten feet on the west side that can be utilized for um active transportation purposes. Um, this is a location of the mid-block crossing that I was talking about between Morning Sun and Elfcrest. Obviously, you're all familiar with our uh race crossings. So in summary, um, we think at the moment, those nine alternatives that we presented to you, uh, although we have the results about their travel time impact based on the models, since we don't have cost estimate on those, we have some ideas about, obviously, we know signals will cost way less than roundabouts and the stop signs costs very minimal, but there is no constructibility, there is no emergency response on evaluation, there's no roundabout feasibility. So we just mathematically modeled these changes on those. So we think we can do a little bit more with regards to uh feasibility and and budget estimate and cost estimate associated with those different scenarios. Again, we have some ideas, we can discuss those, but we don't have any numbers. But the second portion of the report where it talks about signing and a strapping, active transportation improvement, crosswalk improvements, safety enhancements, those we think we can be, we can be funding those uh in the next fiscal year, we will bring them after the design is completed uh for council uh final review and approval. The task force recommendations uh out of those nine scenarios, as I explained, was not to implement any traffic signals along the corridor. Task force believed that it's not in line with the community character, uh although the modeling showed that they had uh benefits uh with regards to improving travel time. And also they believe that the always stop controls are very beneficial to the community and considering the history of those, they did not want any scenario to remove them unless they are replaced with roundabouts. So that's it, that's a summary of uh the the consultant's findings. And um, all the modelings and all the efforts that we did are based on council's direction to evaluate uh what the travel time currently is and how we can make changes on the corridor to improve a travel time. That concludes my presentation and I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Abe. Let's take the public comments and then we'll go to council questions and comments.
Okay, let me just get to that screen. Let's see, our first speaker is Richard Keating. And you can start when ready and you do have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, I I'd originally signed up because I wanted to give my time, uh, yield my time to Wayland Myers. But I understand we're not, we're not allowed to do that. So I will just say that having read uh Mr. Myers' report uh and having some familiarity with Oliverinheim and the problem being a former Oliverinheim resident, it just seems to me that keeping those always stops is is it, given the amount of pollution and the the uh congestion that they cause is 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 ridiculous in this day and age. This, this is not your grandmother's Oliverinheim anymore. The amount of pollution that is produced by the cars stopping and starting at all those stop signs is ridiculous in in this day and age. And putting in the uh, taking out those stop signs and putting in stoplights at uh El Camino del Norte and Lone Jack Road seems to me to be the obvious solution in this uh, in in this case. Uh, I would certainly direct you to to uh Mr. Myers' report on who actually participated in this, in the uh task force, who those people were, and ask the question of whether they in fact benefit from having always stops because they live on those streets that benefit from having always stops. I do not believe that this re- that this uh report that's been presented to the council, which was pre- prepared by the consultant, includes the original uh recommendation of the consultant, which was to take out all this, all the stop signs and put in, put in the two stoplights. It's it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward, I think, in terms of what the council needs needs to do in this day and age. Those stop signs were put in thirty years ago. They, they serve no purpose other than to provide congestion and environmental pollution today. So I would uh, I would, I would certainly uh associate myself with the report of uh Mr. Myers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wayland Myers.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Okay, so I am Mr. Myers and uh, first of all, I want to say uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to address thank you very much for the opportunity to address you on this issue. I had sent you guys a letter last week, which I know got forwarded to you and some of the information that I'm going to provide right now is repetitious, but for the sake of the people who haven't seen the letter, I'd like to introduce the problem. And then, once I've done that, I've got an idea for how you guys could proceed in terms of actions that you could take that would enable the problem to be solved in a way that would meet everybody's needs in the community as best as they could be met. So, at any rate, I'm a 45-year Encinitas resident and over the years, I've watched our segment of Rancho Santa Fe Road go from quiet, lightly trafficked semi-rural road with no stop signs needed to what it is today, which is one of Encinitas' major thoroughfares, carrying upwards of 15,000 cars a day to and from and through Olivenhain. Our congestion patterns are the result of two things. First thing that causes our congestion pattern is very heavy volume of traffic that's pressing to transit through and through Olivenhain, both in the morning and in the afternoon. In particular, in the afternoon, it's quite bad. That's the first thing that causes the problem. The second thing is that that heavy volume of traffic is made to work its way through a series of seven pairs of stop signs that are spaced less than a mile apart. So, when you take a giant volume of traffic and you make every car stop at every stop sign, what happens here is that at some point, traffic becomes bumper to bumper between every set of stop signs. Once traffic reaches that point, then the number of times that a car has to stop in response to a stop sign is multiplied from one to as many, needing to stop as many times as there are cars between the two stop signs. So, 30 cars between the stop signs means that every car has to stop 30 times in order to get through that pair of stop signs. So, just as an example, a trip from Encinitas Boulevard to El Camino del Norte, which normally takes about four minutes during non-rush hour, can take up to 20 minutes during the rush hour, the PM rush hour, and require a car to come to a complete stop 50 times. That's an awful lot of stops and starts. And that's just for, you know, kind of at the worst times, Encinitas Boulevard through Al Camino del Norte. Cars which have to drive all the way through Olivenhain, my conservative rough estimate is that they may be stopping and starting upwards of 200 times in order to make it all the way through Olivenhain. And that produces an incredible amount of pollution. I had trouble understanding some of the charts that the consultant produced. I don't know exactly how many cars he counted going through during.
That is your three minutes, Mr. Myers.
Okay, well. May I just jump then to my recommendation for how you can proceed from this point forward?
Mr. Waylon Myers, you could have another two sentences, but not another several paragraphs. Just to be fair to everybody who speaks.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, you've got two situations, what to do with the heavy volume in the intersections and what to do with the five other intersections that have light traffic. My suggestion is, as a good way to proceed forward, is that you do it in a stepwise fashion. So, right now, you don't have to decide whether it's going to be a stoplight or a roundabout at the intersections of the heavy traffic places. There's a good deal of research that needs to be done on the roundabouts, but there's also really a good deal of research.
Mr. Myers, thank you for comments, thank you.
Okay, well, just read my report, I appreciate that.
Thank you, yes, we did receive it, thank you.
Final speaker is Amy McCord.
Thank you. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. As Abe said, the city conducted a traffic study, which was evaluated by traffic engineering professionals. The Rancho Santa Fe Road Task Force surveyed the community twice. And for more than six months, there were meetings to discuss the traffic study as well as studies done on alternate methods of traffic control at intersections. Based on available studies and meetings with Abe Bandigan, it was determined that traffic signals would increase speed and therefore would encourage more cut-through traffic. Studies show significantly more accidents occur at intersections with traffic signals. They also cause more noise as a large group of cars accelerates simultaneously. The committee developed consensus recommendations that were proposed at two community-wide Zoom meetings and have received strong support. To address the goal of improving traffic flow, the committee requests that the city fund a study of best options for roundabouts at the two most heavily trafficked intersections of El Camino del Norte and Lone Jack. Safe walking trails mean fewer vehicle trips, so the long-awaited completion of Trail 82 is a priority. We recognize that the city is working to resolve issues with utility locations in the right of way and we appreciate your efforts to push this forward. While roundabouts and completion of Trail 82 await final design and funding, the following less expensive, more easily achievable improvements can make an immediate positive impact on safety in the community. Because there are actually no crosswalks on Olivenhain's entire stretch of Rancho Santa Fe Road, drivers are often not looking for pedestrians, including schoolchildren, cyclists, and equestrians who frequently need to cross the road. Injuries and fatalities have occurred and will continue to occur until the city takes action to provide safe crossings. We urgently request crosswalks at Olive Crest, 13th Street, 11th, 8th, and 7th Streets. Rancho Santa Fe Road is a small two-lane country road with a speed limit of 40 miles per hour, which exceeds that on much larger multi-lane streets throughout the city. High speed on Rancho Santa Fe Road causes accidents, especially on the curves. We ask that you conduct a speed study to determine the lowest feasible speed limit. To encourage slower, safer speed, Abe recommends restriping lanes where appropriate. Please post school zone speed limit signs near Degano and OPE. The task force recommendations are based on current heavy levels of traffic on Rancho Santa Fe Road. A number of residents attending the community Zoom meetings were angered that there was no mention of the horrendous possibility of adding another 500 cars from Goodson's proposed six-story apartment building at one of two main fire evacuation exits. This would create a scenario as dangerous as the Paradise Wildfire. We urge you to make public safety your top priority. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then we had one speaker, Shirley Strom, and I do not see her present. So, that does conclude comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mosca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and just wanted to start the conversation from the city council side. As the city council member who represents Olivenhain, most of Olivenhain, and lives in Olivenhain and was one of the initiators of this task force, I wanted to just share some information with you. First, I want to thank Abe for his staffing this item and helping us along. I want to thank you, the city council, for seeing this issue and seeing this problem and so far, supporting the effort of trying to find, invest in this road and find solutions to the problems that we've identified. I want to thank the residents of Olivenhain and frankly, throughout the entire city. There have been dozens of folks throughout the city that have participated in our conversation, not just from Olivenhain, but all throughout the city that are interested in circulation and interest in mobility and safety. And so, we had a number of folks from our Traffic and Public Safety Commission that have participated in these calls and meetings. I also want to thank all the task force members, including Amy McCord, who is speaking very articulately tonight, thank you, Amy, for coming, and Waylon Myers, who is also a task force member. Thank you, Waylon, as well for all the time that you've put in to this effort. You know, as has been said, there wasn't 100% unanimity on this issue. There isn't in the community of Olivenhain. But I do think that we have some consensus on the issue, the problem, and solutions. And so, we've been working hard at this. This is not just, the task force is made up of folks that live on Rancho Santa Fe Road, live off of Rancho Santa Fe Road, have been in the community for 40 years, 10 years, five years. And so, there is a diversity. We have surveyed the community and so there's support for what we've been talking about. And so, just to kind of go through some of the things, you know, the recommendations that are before you that we feel are critically important, they're really kind of aligned with our safety and mobility in the city. And so, we're really asking the city council to move forward some of the safety and mobility measures that we believe that can be funded in this fiscal year. Crosswalks, there are no crosswalks throughout this entire corridor. And we've had a number of, unfortunately, a number of serious accidents and fatalities as well. And I think that having more crosswalks throughout this corridor, specifically at our two most important intersections that have been a pinch point for us in this corridor and have heavy traffic, El Camino del Norte and RSF Road and Lone Jack and Rancho Santa Fe Road, those specifically. But there are a number of other crossings that should be deployed that we have in our recommendations and I hope that we'll do. The mid-block crossing, this has been advocated not only for, by this task force, but by people that are advocates for safe routes to schools, by the equestrians, equestrian owners. This has been advocated for some time. Obviously, we have up at Calle A Servo, La Posta, we have OPE, Olivenhain Pioneer Elementary School, and we have a lot of folks, a lot of kids that are walking and riding their bikes to school in the morning. We have Degano on the other side of, on the west side of the road. And then we have LCC out there as well. And so, a mid-block crossing, there is really no crossing, you know, that entire distance. So, having a mid-block crossing or race crossing, which would allow people to safely cross from the east side to the west side or from the west side to the east side, is absolutely necessary. Again, we've been talking about this for a while, it's needed. And we really believe that the lane adjustments need to happen in order to get these speeds under control. Obviously, during the peak traffic time, we don't have the speeds, but off-peak, we have some really fast-moving vehicles. And we believe that doing more with the lane adjustments will not only address that issue, but will also heighten mobility. We have a lot of cyclists that come through that road and putting more width on those shoulders will help that mobility and make it even safer to be on the corridor. And so, also the speed survey, I think it's critically important. Amy had talked about the fact that it's 40 miles per hour. You know, we have a target speed on El Camino Real of 35 miles per hour and people come unglued when the traffic studies show that it may go up to 40 miles per hour. We have 40 miles per hour speed limit on Rancho Santa Fe Road. It just doesn't make sense. We have a lot of people riding horses, riding bikes, and walking in this corridor. Again, we've had serious accidents and fatalities, we need to get the speed under 40 miles per hour. I'd suggest that we do a speed survey as soon as we can with a target speed of perhaps 30 miles per hour, but we'll see what that says. The fencing along, Amy didn't mention this or nobody else did, but the fencing along the trail north of Lone Jack is important. We need to get that in, that's been talked about for so many years. I know that the Trails Coalition tried to make a go at fundraising for that, but it didn't happen. But that's another safety issue. If we want to encourage families and kids to walk to school, you know, putting and fencing so that they don't feel like they're side-by-side with cars that are moving very quickly is so important. Trail 82, you know, the last gap in the trail system on Rancho Santa Fe Road, which would allow a continuous trail from Calle A Servo right down to Encinitas Boulevard, is so critically important. I know you guys know this and I know that you were surprised, just like I was, that it wasn't going to move forward. But we need to make this a priority. We need to make sure that the remainder of the design for that trail is budgeted for. We need to make sure that that design is done as quickly as possible. We need to make sure that that design gets over to the utilities, specifically SDGNE, and that they design the removal and relocation of the guardways, poles, and above-ground facilities as quickly as possible. And I'd like to have this item in a future CIP, maybe a couple of years out, which will correspond when SDGNE and the other utilities are done. I'd like to have money in that CIP to complete this project. It's been promised to the community, we've been talking about it for a while. This will just enhance the mobility and safety of this area in tenfold, especially if we see density at the corner of Encinitas and Rancho Santa Fe Road. Putting in mobility measures and amenities like this will help out in a big way. I also think, lastly, that, you know, the roundabouts at Lone Jack and at El Camino del Norte that are called for in this recommendation, again, we believe that it's the right fit for the community. We're actually, you know, pretty much consistent throughout the city of Encinitas at looking at roundabouts as opposed to traffic lights in these areas. And so, we believe it's the right fit for the community of Olivenhain as well. And, but we haven't done any kind of feasibility work on this. We don't know if it fits there, we don't know if it makes sense from a public safety perspective. There's been a lot of questions in terms of horse trailers and ability to get out in case of emergency. So, I really think that we need to fund a feasibility study to look at whether or not these roundabouts are in fact feasible for the area. And so, I just end with, you know, it's been a great opportunity of mine to kind of work with my fellow Olivenhain residents and come up with some consensus measures. Again, I know that it's not exactly what some folks would want. I hear people out there that want to pull up every stop sign. I'd say that, you know, people, they're there for a reason. You know, people want to be able to get out from the side streets onto Lone Jack, they want a certain level of safety. And so, if we address those safety issues, those mobility issues, I think that we're moving in the right direction, we're making progress. And so, I think that the recommendations before you are some solid recommendations that have support in the community of Olivenhain and support throughout the city of Encinitas. Abe has also shared a lot of this information with the Traffic and Public Safety Commission. And correct me if I'm wrong, Abe, I believe that the Traffic and Public Safety Commission has also given its blessing or at least support for these measures. And so, I hope that we continue to show the love for Olivenhain and support for these measures and that we move as quickly as possible, especially on some of these safety, mobility measures that we believe that we can get budgeted in this fiscal year. And then some of the other items, perhaps we start to program into the CIP in the future. And I'd be happy to take any questions as well, but thank you so much and hope to have your support to move some of these forward.
Okay, well, thank you. Before I call on councilmember lines, I just want to clarify that what's on the agenda tonight is to receive the report. So, you know, when we formed this committee in 2019, which was the request of the council member representing Olivenhain, you know, we all know that we have received comments from people in Olivenhain about the conditions on Rancho Santa Fe Road with a lot of diversity of opinions for years. And I remember that from when I was even on the Traffic and Public Safety Commission, which was, you know, eight, nine years ago, that this would come up repeatedly. So, I think we recognized when we formed the committee that the work being done was not being value engineered, it wasn't aiming toward a specific response to one problem or another. It was recognizing that some people want to go faster through there, some people want to go slower, some people want to deal with congestion, some people want to deal with safety, some people are interested in active transportation, some people are interested in dark skies. So, you know, there are a lot of different competing interests and to try to have a forum and a format to have that discussion happen. So, that's been happening for the last two years since 2019. And so, now today in front of us is the receive the report. And then in the future, along with all the other corridors that we're working on, like Santa Fe and Birmingham and Highway 101 and the Costa Avenue and the Crossing of the Railroad, you know, all of those things are also in their process and that those at future times will be coming forward like this one will for different funding improvements. But also, you know, as we do our slurry seals and But also, you know, as we do our slurry seals and the pavement improvement projects, we can be restriping and putting in crosswalks and doing those things as part of like the yearly, just the three million dollars we spend on, on pavement every year. So hopefully going through this process will result in some of those smaller improvements that you were talking about, Councilmember Mosca. But, but yeah, just to, to, to recognize what's happening here is to receive the report. We're not making a decision about what exactly we will do on this corridor. So with that, Councilmember Lines.
Thank you, Mayor Blakeshire, and thank you, Councilmember Mosca, for your good work here. In receiving this report, I have two questions for Abe. My first one has to do with the cross-sections that you have on, on your PowerPoint deck, slide eight. Joe, Councilmember Mosca was talking about cycling. And I think it's acknowledged that there are bicycles who will be using this quarter. So could you explain to me where in the potential cross-section bicycles would be accommodated or is that something that maybe is just a comment to give to you? And you can follow up when you finalize the report to identify how bicycles would be accommodated? Or do you have some comments on that?
We can see your PowerPoint, Abe. But we can't hear you. I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. We can see, we can see the graphic too, yeah.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Hines, the, the cross-section, as you know, along the stretch kind of changes. It's not a constant width. In some areas, we have narrower widths. We have around twenty-three, twenty-four at some, some narrowest bottlenecks. And it goes up to around thirty-three, thirty-four. So what we're showing here is we really haven't surveyed the road at every hundred feet to have an actual cat file. This is just a concept. What, what we do know is we can narrow down the lanes drastically compared to what's out there right now. And the shoulder area we have on the right, on the east side, we don't need it. So we know we can shift the lanes to the east. What will remain on the west side, we don't want to mark it. There's currently no, no standard in M U T C D in our standards and manuals that would dedicate, that would designate a certain piece of the roadway as a multi-use to be, like, we can't put pedestrian marking or bike marking or horse marking, all of them on the, on the edge. What we can do is with certain delineation, it can be ballers if we want to. Again, that's a matter of aesthetics, a matter of, you know, community interest. We can do certain raised pavement markers, these bot dots that you've seen around, you know, different cities that wouldn't allow cars to easily get into this space. We can kind of separate this space from the two lanes. And when that happens, that space can be utilized by pedestrians, by horses. We can have custom-made signs that clarifies for the residents that this stretch is to be used by different modes of transportation, non-vehicular.
Okay, I don't, don't want to belabor that. It just made me want to make the comment that as you develop the cross-section and you look at this further to, to evaluate how the bicycles can be accommodated within the footprint of the road. And I think it's a challenge sometimes to mix bicycles and horses, so that needs to, needs to be carefully considered. And that's my comment. My second comment has, is more of a question. It sounded like the signing and the striping and the crosswalks are afforded, are something that can be afforded in the twenty-one, twenty-two funding. Would you say that the speed survey could follow immediately after that and could be considered part of that first phase? So that addressing the speed limit could be also done?
Great question, something that I would like to reiterate, similar to what Mayor mentioned. These improvements that we are presenting tonight, the scenarios and the other ones, the signing and the striping, the crosswalks, everything I mentioned, nothing is on the books and funded right now. What I mentioned with regards to funds available being that we, we do have the opportunity to fund these improvements if directed by council in the next fiscal year. So we don't have a project currently being designed for the striping on this road or we haven't ordered any signs or we haven't, you know, asked the contractor to come out and paint these. We feel, we think we can do this, but compared to, you know, this has to be prioritized with all the other stuff that's going on in town and all the other improvements that we're doing in different roads of the city. So I wanted to clarify that while we think we might have the budget in the next fiscal year, it still needs council direction and funding.
Thank you for clarifying. That's it for me.
Yeah, and I'll just jump in there too, that I think one of the things we, we struggled with and talked about at the beginning of forming the committee, I think the city manager at the time was concerned about forming a committee where we weren't clear that we would be able to fund the improvements because of concern about raising expectations. But, you know, Councilmember Mosca really was demonstrating leadership and saying, you know, I want to work with my community to come up with a plan that could be of potential in the future. And if we don't start that work, then we won't ever be able to have that discussion about what to fund. So, you know, I feel like even though we, we knew at the outset, I just want to make sure it's clear that it's not like anything was over-promised. It's that we knew that this was something that would go through a process and that here we are at that next stage. And I think it's great and I applaud Councilwoman Mosca and the staff and the community that's participating for, for going through it because it's always a lot of work to, to figure out what is possible and then to talk about it. So, you know, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that there's no, there was no expectation, I think, from staff that they would have already programmed this into the budget. Because we do have a lot of those priorities and things that have been in, in the queue for ten years, you know. Deputy Mayor Krantz.
Right, I remember the deliberations over this and I did vote not to support the fifty thousand dollar allocation to the, to the consultant because it's conversations like these that I think want to take place throughout our city. And, you know, we've had week after week of people pointing out that La Costa Avenue is getting killed. And, you know, we haven't had the opportunity to have this same conversation. I had always tried to be patient and, and have these conversations as a part of the broader circulation element conversation. And I think we're getting close to being able to do that at La Costa Avenue. Plus, we have this next agenda item that's going to give us a chance to talk. But we'll be, we won't be talking with the same level of information. We won't have the data that has been made available here. I, I guess, questions for Abe. One of the speakers tonight pointed out that Stack didn't use their fancy computer where they plugged in and modeled some of these changes. Is, is that, is that true?
No, no, Councilmember Krantz. What the gentleman was referring to when we presented this scope to the council, I think in December nineteen, one of the ideas, because the consultant threw in some ideas when they presented the scope. One of their ideas was, well, there is the opportunity to eliminate these unwarranted stop signs and improve traffic flow by just doing that and adding a signal or something. So what, what the gentleman was referring to, that why isn't there a scenario that modeled removing all of the stop signs there? So we still, all of the nine scenarios that are in the report, each single one of them was modeled extensively in the report, was calibrated. The travel times are all based on the models. The concern was that while, when, when you brought this idea to council, you said, we will evaluate removing all of the stop signs. Why is not that scenario there? And the reason for that is when we modeled those, there were some other scenarios that were modeled that was not super beneficial and the consultant found that, well, we can get the best result by just removing two or three of them, which is included in there. I think it's like alternative three or two.
The other concern that I had was that it didn't seem like, like we were quantifying the amount of cut-through traffic there is. And the report does make mention on many occasions of the frustration with the traffic coming out of Carlsbad and San Marcos that would travel on Rancho Santa Fe Road and turn left and continue on Rancho Santa Fe Road instead of going to El Camino Real to make their way to five or to continue on Lucchetti Boulevard to get to the five. And it, I couldn't see any data that, that really indicated what the cut-through, level of cut-through traffic is. Did I miss that or is, is that something we didn't, we didn't quantify?
It, it shows you think very, very, very much the same after two years, Councilmember Krantz. So the night this was presented to council in December nineteen, you asked specifically this scope to be added. The, the, the question of what is the level of cut-through traffic? The discussion at council with my input was, we can find that. It would be an additional, you know, money and it would be an additional lines, few lines to the scope. And the result, whatever it is, might not necessarily change the results. Because we can find that fifty percent of the problem is being caused by outsiders. But state laws doesn't allow us to discriminate, to do anything that would in any way make things tougher for non-residents and make things simpler for our residents. Because of that matter, council decided to not allocate any extra funding or modify the scope and include that cut-through traffic analysis into the, into the study. So that piece was dropped.
Okay, yeah, now, thanks for the reminder. I knew there was something, maybe I've been around the block once too many times and, and it got hit on the head or something. But I do think that's valuable. I think it's valuable for regional conversations because it's important to be able to say, hey, by the way, Mayor of San Marcos, you know, you, you've got a lot of traffic coming this way and maybe there's a way you can work with your community to, instead of having them cut through this rural neighborhood, that they stay on El Camino Real. So I, I think that we're missing out on an opportunity when we don't quantify that. But I lost that then and I guess I'm gonna, we ended up with a report that doesn't give us that tool. And I don't know that we ever will get that. But will this data be valuable for conversations related to the circulation element or not?
There, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a bigger question, I would say. Many cities do have these, they call them cord-and-line analyses with regards to what is the level of traffic that comes into their cities and sometimes passes their cities. And it does affect their classification of roads, so they just don't model their own internal trips. But for the sake of this specific task that we have in hand, which is improving flow of traffic and improving safety, which is really a short horizon, it's not really a distant horizon. We want to fix things very quickly. That really doesn't matter much.
Finally, the, the idea that there are no crosswalks on Rancho Santa Fe Road is quite shocking. And so it would say to me that we don't need slurry seal to send out the, the contractor to put in some crosswalks. And I would hope that we would have the opportunity in a budget hearing to consider the money for raised crosswalks. Because I think one of the things that we've seen is the value of raised crosswalks when it comes to slowing traffic. I do want to get us to be a slow-speed city. And that said, I know, Abe, that we were talking about that down on the one-on-one in Cardiff. And you pointed out that speed tables are not recommended for speeds over, I believe it's thirty-five miles an hour. So maybe we would need to figure out a way to bring speeds down in order to be able to put in the speed tables. But I do think they are effective for calming traffic. So it would be my hope that we could identify a few locations for those. Rectangular flashing beacons, R R F B, I think it is, those would be nice as well. I do think we need to really focus on making our community, all parts of our community more walkable. And then finally, you know, a lot of schools, we got Degainio, we've got OPE, as, as Joe mentioned, we've got Country Day School, we've got a lot of schools. Is there money through the Safe Routes to Schools program that we might be able to program for some of this stuff?
I would have to talk to our budget analyst for the, for the, for the prioritization purpose and find out. Because, because those have very specific languages. From what I remember, although the title is called Safe Routes to School, the description of the language is really not that much traffic. It's more about sidewalks. I think it's more concrete work, but then again, don't quote me on that. I have to double-check with her.
Okay, well, I would think, yeah, that's, you know, it would be great to get sidewalks. I don't know if Levenheim really wants sidewalks, so maybe that's, that's not what they want. But encouraging bicycling and, you know, I just think that anything we can do to make it easier for people to get out of their cars, the better. So I will be looking for opportunities to support that and appreciate all the effort that went into this from Joe and all the members of the community out there. This, as Mayor Blakeshire mentioned, is a longstanding issue and there are definitely differences of opinion about which, which way things should go. So it's a, might even call it contentious issue, so not easy. And I appreciate the effort that went into it.
Okay, thank you. And now before I call on Councilwoman Mosca, again, I think we need to remember that we need, have another item here, so we should move on to that. But also just to clarify, do we need a motion to accept the report?
I don't, this is Leslie. I don't, I don't think you do.
Okay, okay, great. Councilwoman Mosca, do you want to make a final comment then?
Just really quickly, I did want to say that, that mid-block crossing, Deputy Mayor Krantz, is going to be the northern portions of the corridor where we have the, the greatest width in road and surface there. And that's where we're experiencing the speeding as well. And so that, that's going to be really important for, for safety for our kids that are crossing in those areas. And I just wanted to, I, I mean, I understand, you know, where we're at in terms of our finances and, and all of the demands across the city. When we had the conversation about the general fund and how much it would contribute to our CIP a couple of meetings ago, I brought this up. And, and, and at that time, it was said, you know, a lot of the recommendations that you're making, aside from the big items, the, the, the roundabouts, which are clearly got to be programmed into a CIP, these other items are really not general fund contribution to a CIP. They're smaller than that. They don't need to be on the CIP. There's going to be multiple funds for this. And so I didn't raise that argument at that time because I believe that there was a pathway forward for some of these, these items. If, if, if I was wrong, then, you know, I would have made the argument at that time that, that these were important enough to move forward. Again, some of these items are, are not only items that, that this task force has identified, but they're items that have, have been promised to the community for some time. They're not just, you know, and some of them are, are striping that are so critically important. So I just want to ask the staff, you know, Abe, or I see Pam there too, you know, what is the timeline? What is the pathway here? Because I want to make sure that we're, we're making progress on some of these and that this, you know, this study is not going to just be buried, but that we're going to make, we're going to move on some of this.
Councilmember Mosca, what I, what I would suggest, maybe that you let us know, we're in the process of looking at all of those special funds, Safe Routes to School, et cetera, and perhaps give us a timeline to bring something back, perhaps after the break and give some options. And in particular, I think there are some things that obviously Abe and the traffic team will want to look at in terms of feasibility as well. But I think that we can bring something back shortly after the break and let you know what we think are some things that could be funded through some of those special set-aside funds.
Thank you.
Let her know, Abe, if you were going to add something to that or, sorry, I cut you off.
No, no, that was, that was what I wanted to say. We need to go back because, because at, at the moment, I don't know how much these things would cost really. So we would need some sort of a cost estimate to be able to find out where it stands.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, thank you, everybody. It's great to have an update on the task force and hear the report and hear the public comments about the report and hear from Councilmember Mosca. So let's move on to our next item, which is another road item. This one is, this is probably Abe's as well, ten D, Safety and Mobility Enhancements at the intersection of Vulcan and La Costa. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure, are you, are you, is this shared by our IT group? Because I didn't share my screen. Am I being helped by IT? Do you see anything or?
We just see you, but.
Okay.
But you, you were able to share before, so you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because it came up on my screen. I was wondering if.
And Mayor, we do have one speaker on this item.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. Abe Bandigan again, City Traffic Engineer. I promise you, this is my last item tonight. This is the Safety and Mobility Enhancement on Vulcan and La Costa intersection. So the location, obviously, you're all familiar with. This is one of the first location when I started with the city around three and a half years ago. I noticed that the geometry of the intersection is not the geometry that we like to see. But it's a very old intersection and there is a lot of. But it's a very old intersection and there is a lot of different elements in place that make this intersection a little bit different with our regular, you know, perpendicular T intersections. We have the slope, we have the narrow road, we have the double curve on Vulcan Avenue, and we have the limited side distance. So this is obviously northbound Vulcan looking east. And this is the same location looking west. As you can see, we have somewhat of a limited side distance both directions and also turning left from westbound La Costa onto Vulcan at certain periods of the day is not very convenient, is not very easy. The data luckily shows that we haven't had that many serious collision or fatalities at this intersection. The data does somewhat say that people are very familiar with how this intersection operates and can make their safe maneuvers here. However, the geometry of the intersections and our standards and manuals tell us that we've got to do something. A little bit of background, I said, we have received a lot, and this is just the number of years that I've been with the city. I'm sure this intersection have been a matter of, have been a topic of discussion for a long, long time. We have received a lot of comments from public residents of Vulcan, residents of La Costa, even people who don't live on those two roads about the safety concerns that they have for making maneuvers at this intersection. We have this traffic log that Traffic Commission tasks the staff to evaluate certain things. On February of nineteen, after several contacts were public made to the Traffic Commission, and also two or three of the commissioners themselves brought this idea up, they put this on our traffic log and tasked staff to evaluate this intersection and report back to the Commission. We identified the opportunity to put a signal there. That's usually the first things that traffic engineers go to, where we have an intersection, that you have conflicting maneuvers and you have safety concerns, and the volume is high enough to justify a signal. So we have eight or nine warrants in our manuals and standards in M U T C D. Each single warrant can justify a traffic signal technically to allow people, allow engineers to put signals at intersections. That location, if I remember correctly, met two or three out of those warrants, so way more than the one that we needed. This, the signal warrant analysis was presented to Traffic Commission in March of nineteen. It was, it had unanimous support, they were, they asked us to recommend this signal to council. However, at that point, it was just a signal warrant analysis, it was not a signal design. Similar to the other conversations we had about those other signals on Rancho Santa Fe and the roundabouts, we started conducting a feasibility analysis since the intersection was warranted, the signal was warranted. We conducted the feasibility analysis and finalized the design. We took the design to Commission in November of twenty twenty. Commission reviewed it, they had a few comments about the walkway on La Costa and some minor modifications to the intersection. They approved it, they blessed it, and recommended us take it to council immediately. What the extra task that they assigned to staff was, they asked me how long it would take if council decides to approve this signal and fund it, how long would it take to build it? And my response, similar to what I have in my report today, was around twelve to eighteen months. One major bottleneck that would govern the building of a signal is the fact that all around the country, signal poles are around six to nine months backordered. So even if we start building the signal today, the soonest we can get a signal pole is around six to nine months from now. Then they said, well, we have this traffic signal warrant analyses and we have all these concerns from public. What is an interim measure that you can do here to address this concern that we have and residents have? My response to them was, in April twenty twenty one, there is an option that M U T C D, for the record, I'm sure you're all familiar with manual and uniform traffic control devices, there is a code in there that says if a location is wanted for a traffic signal, you are allowed as an interim measure to put a always stop control there. So I took it to Traffic Commission, I said, this is the option. If we think twelve months or eighteen months is a long time, or if we are not sure about the funding of the signal or about the priority of it, we have this option of putting the stop sign in. So this is the history of how it evolved. I know council at some point had concerns and questions about, well, what is that signal? What is this, a stop sign? Why is the staff changing their mind? So I wanted to give you the background of how this process of evaluations at that intersection evolved and how we went from having nothing to a study for the warrants of the signal, to the design of the signal, and to the always stop control as an interim measure. So the scenario one, we have three scenarios here. The scenario one is to implement the low hanging fruit, which is the ten thousand dollar for the always stop control. We will make it absolutely safe, turning would be easy, people will find easy gaps, very convenient turns. It will help with the speeding during off-peak periods on La Costa for sure. The major concern is with the level of volume not being balanced. Obviously, we know how La Costa has, carries way more volume than Vulcan. So the stop control does not discriminate, it stops everybody with the same rate. So the delay imposed to La Costa would be higher, and there are concerns about stacking higher level of queuing happening on La Costa during peak periods and the extra congestion and delay that it can cause. And obviously, the advantage would be the extra safety and making those maneuvers safer and easier. In the scenario one, we think we can just do this stop sign and come back in six months and report back to council about what the impacts of this stop sign has been, if there has been any queuing, if there has been any congestion, or anything else that we are missing at the moment. Scenario two is to continue with the always stop control, but immediately after, with the approval of council and the direction, start funding this signal. The funds are available, but again, they're not dedicated to this signal. With the direction of council, we can start, because the designer is ready, we can start hiring a contractor and install building this signal. As mentioned, it will take around twelve to eighteen months. And as soon as the signal is ready to go in, the stop signs will be collected, will be removed, and the stop sign will start operating. So the substance will act in the interim to provide that level of safety and convenience we want for those turning movements. The concerns that we have with regards to the signal being implemented, which is not that big of a concern for me personally, but we have had it from the residents, is how that signal would operate considering the fact that it's close to the one-on-one signal. So that is how we time those signals and the programming of those. While it's not going to be easy, we have this situation that we have, you know, signals close to each other. And we are confident that we can modify the timing in a proper way and align the timing and sync the signals in a way that they are coordinated and work properly. So that is a concern, but that's not a deal breaker for me, I think we can handle it. Scenario three is, we also had comments and suggestions from members of public about, well, we have a bunch of roundabouts in the city and we're adding more with the streetscape, why not consider a roundabout here? Similar to other, the previous item with Rancho Santa Fe, we do not have a feasibility analysis conducted here at this intersection to see if a roundabout can even go there, let alone what the traffic implications of that future roundabout would be. So it needs some sort of physical analysis, feasibility analysis, some physical evaluations, check the dimensions, check the roundabout diameter, how the flow would work, some modeling would be reneeded to find out if it can help with regards to functionality, level of service delay, until we get to the point of design. So that we anticipate would need around thirty thousand. Again, with the direction of council, we can fund that. Obviously, we cannot talk about the cost of this potential roundabout, it hasn't even been designed. So if this scenario is supported by council, we would be, we would have to fund a feasibility analysis and a modeling. And we'll come back if the roundabout is feasible and if it's justified with regards to its benefits and advantages, we'll come back in a few months to present to you a scope and fee for designing a roundabout. And obviously, the cost estimate associated with that future roundabout will come in at a later point. But we can, we cannot talk about the cost of the roundabout because we don't know if it's going to be even feasible. So this is the third scenario. And obviously, we're asking council to provide us direction on one of these for how to change the intersection control at this location. One additional piece of work that, no matter which one of the scenarios is chosen by council, we think we can fund and is beneficial to the community, is to form a walkway that has been long requested by the community to connect this intersection to one-on-one, to provide access from La Costa and Vulcan residents toward the beach. This area that you can see on the south side of La Costa, we think we have the opportunity, with minimal impact to our budget, to do a nice, clean path that would provide access from the southwest corner of the intersection to the bridge. As you can see the plan here, we think we have enough room and enough right-of-way there, and the drainage can be resolved for us to be able to connect that corner. The cost that we have, based on the cost estimate right now, is around eighty thousand. Again, the funds are available, not dedicated to this specific project. We think we can fund it in the next fiscal year budget under direction of council. As mentioned, it would improve our access to the beach. One concern that we have, if the signal scenario is not selected, is that without a signal, the crossing over Vulcan or crossing over La Costa can be challenging. We still have the stop signs, again, if any of the, if the stop sign scenario is selected. Even with the stop sign, crossing is not as comfortable as having a signal there. So it can be somewhat challenging, but it's still, having a stop sign there can help. And then the construction, we anticipate, considering, since the funds are available, we anticipate it would take around six months. So on this one, we also need council's direction and approval. That concludes my presentation, and I appreciate your patience, I'm open to questions.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, that's all really interesting stuff. And, I mean, I'm concerned that there's proposals for crosswalks, I mean, for stop signs or lights without having done an analysis of the effect on traffic. Because, I mean, even scenario one, which was the lowest level possible, it's like, we would put, you would study the traffic, right, for six months? Traffic effect. So does it seem like it's premature to put anything in before we've studied that part? That just seems so critical.
That is correct, Mayor. However, usually, I know this is a sensitive location. Usually, our process, as is with other locations in town where we have proposed stop signs to council is, since there is a technical warrant analyses associated with the stop signs and we have a approved policy by council for a stop sign evaluations, if a location is warranted, we usually tend to put them in and not consider the impacts it might have on congestion and delay. Now, I do understand that this intersection is different, it's not a neighborhood intersection or, I guess, target driveway on Via Citteria. This is a sensitive location. But the reason being is, this location was analyzed per our council-approved policy, and it does meet our policy and it does meet the M U T C D to get a stop sign. Now, obviously, council can easily override. And if that's the idea, if that's the recommendation of council for us to go analyze what the impact, what the traffic impact of this future stop sign would be with regards to queuing and delay, we can certainly do that, too.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just also in light of the conversation just before this about Rancho Santa Fe road congestion, which is the result of those stop signs. So let me call on Councilmember Deputy Mayor Krantz.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate the report and update. I know this has been one of those things that has spent a lot of time at the Traffic and Public Safety Commission. I wonder, before we get into too much conversation, whether we should have the public speaker. Can we do that, Madam Mayor?
Yes, we should do that, let's call in the speaker.
Our speaker is June Honsberger. June, you can start when ready.
Hi, good evening, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Encinita City Council members. My name is June Honsberger, and I live in Lucadia, and I frequent this intersection that you are discussing tonight. I am asking that you please support scenario two, which is the installation of the already designed and funded traffic signal at this intersection of La Costa and Vulcan. And I do also support a temporary installation of an always stop sign while we wait on the construction of the traffic signal. I am not in support of a stop sign permanently, but as a temporary interim measure, I think it is a good idea. This intersection is dangerous and it is only going to get worse. There is currently a new seventy-unit apartment building that is going in right on that corner of Vulcan. And the only egress and ingress into that apartment is off of Vulcan. And I know that, I think that traffic analysis was done and a warrant analysis was done at that exact intersection, and it met the criteria for a signal, which was approved by Traffic and Safety. I know that it has been designed, the design looks great. And we, I am also in support of installing that additional sidewalk. This is our only safe route to the beach in this part of town, and it is not safe. It is, I shouldn't say our only safe route, it's our only route to the beach. So we need this stoplight now, we cannot wait for any more study of this intersection. It is dangerous, there are accidents, there are near accidents almost every day, and we cannot get in and out of our neighborhood. If a light was there, more people would use Vulcan and it would make it a safer way for us to move around. So thank you very much for your consideration. Again, please, please install the stoplight that has already been designed. Have a great evening.
Okay, thank you, June. Deputy Mayor Krantz.
Yes, thanks. I, I think everybody knows what a fan I am of roundabouts. I think they're a much more effective way of moving traffic. Sitting at a stupid light when, when, you know, it's, there are no cars coming, just, to me, seems like a significant waste of time. So anybody wanting to turn left off of Vulcan on to La Costa Avenue to get to Coast Highway one-on-one would be stuck at the light. Right now, it's not an easy left-hand turn because of all the traffic moving. An always stop would make that much safer. Would it not, Abe, make a left turn off of Vulcan on to La Costa Avenue safer to have an always stop?
Absolutely, Councilmember. The safety improvement associated with the stop sign is unquestionable. There's no doubt, there's no doubt that the safety will be improved. The only concern is congestion.
Yeah, and wouldn't a signal make a right-hand turn off of Vulcan a bit of a challenge? Because if you have a red light at Vulcan to go on to La Costa Avenue and the eastbound traffic is, has a green light and there's a car blocking your visibility when you're trying to make a right-hand turn on to La Costa Avenue, it could get pretty hairy there with the traffic signal. So I think overall, I have some significant concerns about a traffic signal. I am a big fan of roundabouts, so I would prefer the option where we analyze roundabouts. And, but I do think that an always stop is critical. And whether it's any of the scenarios, I think that starting with an always stop is really important to improve safety at that intersection. The other thing that I want to mention is that we're kind of not alone in this. We have, we have Carlsbad that we need to, we need to work with as well. And, you know, there, there, we had a lawsuit against the city of Carlsbad as part of, as a result of their approval of the specific plan up at Ponto. And one of the things that I want to point out about, one of the exhibits in that settlement is this line right here and this line right here are the proposed right-of-way for La Costa Avenue. So if we put in a signal at this intersection, given the current roadway, we, what, you know, if we ever make an effort to acquire the right-of-way that's necessary to deal with bike and pads and the level of traffic, we would either be digging up the work that we did with traffic signals or having, you know, perhaps substandard. As an example, with these two lines as the right-of-way, the center line of the road is essentially the southerly edge of the pavement. So, you know, I'm not saying that this is necessarily what we want to do, but I do think that as part of our circulation. So, you know, I'm not saying that this is necessarily what we want to do, but I do think that as part of our circulation element and a consideration of the the situation on La Costa Avenue, we should establish whether in fact, we want to follow through on this particular plan and acquire the necessary right of way to do whatever it is that we're going to do in the future. Because I don't want to foreclose by spending a quarter of a million dollars on traffic signals and putting in these poles. I don't want to foreclose the opportunities that might be presented by actually doing this intersection in a more, in a safer and and more cost, you know, in a way that improves bike and pedestrian experience in this area. And with the apartments that may come, we know that the Weston property, the tentative map has been bought. That's going to be in development pretty soon. We know we've got the hotel. We've got the village. There are traffic mitigation funds that are going to be available for this corridor. And it is my hope that we would accelerate the conversation about some of these solutions to include a roundabout at Sheridan, because when traffic is coming westbound over the freeway and they've got nothing but green lights, they're doing sixty five miles an hour when they hit Sheridan. And so I I think that it's really critical that we look at this La Costa Avenue in a in a holistic way, traffic wise, and do the analysis about the impacts of traffic calming. We have a similar situation over on La Caidia Boulevard where two lanes of traffic get green lights. They're they're going very fast westbound and then they hit the roundabout at High Meadows and and the traffic has to merge together and slow down. And so I think they're very effective. And and I think to rush into putting in a traffic signal here without that analysis is is wrong, especially given some of the, some of the development that's going to be taking place and the resources that may be available to address issues related to bikeability, walkability on this street. So my preference is scenario three, which includes the analysis of roundabouts. It talks only about the roundabout at Vulcan. I would prefer to also analyze a roundabout over at Sheridan. It's complicated because of the way Sheridan doesn't match up, but I think there are ways to address that and get the always stop in there. If it looks like it's going to be imfeasible to do roundabouts, then we can move towards traffic signal if in fact that is the the only solution that we have. But we also have to keep Carlsbad in mind. The impacts that we have on traffic at that, at these intersections could raise issues with the city of Carlsbad as well. And I think that collaborating with them would be in everybody's best interests on this.
Okay, thank you. Could you put scenario three back up there so that we can see what that is? And then also council member Lyons is next.
Thank you, Mayor Blykespear. Thanks. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Krantz, for showing that graphic as well, because that was really informative as far as the right of way. When I have a big picture question for Abe and a detailed question, just for clarification. When you're talking about scenario three, when you were saying it's also adding in the feasibility analysis for roundabouts, did you mean to also say that that it's considering all the roadway from I five to the 101 or is or or not? The scenario three, look at how traffic moves from I five to 101 comprehensively.
Not the whole corridor. So what I say, what I mean by feasibility and modeling, feasibility obviously is the physical, the dimension, the drainage, the right of way that we have over there. Obviously, considering what Councilman Krantz mentioned, we would have to agree on a right of way to do the feasibility analysis. We have to know, because as you know, our our mobility element has not yet completed and the La Costa cross section is not yet a yet a done deal. We don't know if it's going to be a two lane road, four lane road. We know where it's going, but it's not a final design. So the edge of the right of way right now on the cross section of La Costa is not final. So for the for the purpose of that feasibility analysis, we have to agree on something and do the feasibility analysis based on that edge to edge of the road and then say, okay, roundabout can go in there or not. So what Councilman Krantz showed us right now is obviously different from what we would have, you know, used to to check the feasibility of the roundabout. The the modeling aspect of it is more aligned with what what your concern is. However, we won't go as far as the freeway. We would, we would collect the data entering the intersection from both directions and the turning movements and then just model that. So we'll say, okay, this is a through movement going from the east side to the west of the intersection, similar from the west side to the east side, and then the turning movements, left bound Vulcan, right, left, left turn from Vulcan, right turn, and then all these maneuvers will go into the model. And then the roundabout will show us, okay, if it was a signal, this would have been the delay improvement. This would have been the optimized situation. If it's a roundabout, this is what we get out of it.
I I hear, I think what then I'm clear that you're really only looking at the Vulcan roundabout. And Deputy Mayor Krantz was suggesting also looking at Sheridan, which which probably then changes scenario three from what you were thinking scenario.
Very, very much. Correct. If if Sheridan comes into comes into play, the feasibility analysis would be more than double.
I wonder, though, Sheridan seems very important, just because it would be the kind of workaround for people who are dealing with congestion at Vulcan and La Costa. So it would, it seems like that would be important to assess at the same time since people would take Sheridan as a way to avoid any congestion at Vulcan and La Costa. I think they would. I'm not sure.
Yes, yes. If we are, if we are going to model, I'll model, I would most definitely model the neighborhood in that situation. I'll bring Andrew into the conversation. I'll bring Sheridan into the conversation, the cut through that might happen through the neighborhood. So the modeling aspects of it, if we are going to consider two roundabouts, it would, the modeling will be a little bit more comprehensive, I would say. And and honestly, I don't want to commit to any number at this point about like how much it would cost us. So I would have to go back and check about the scope and fee.
You know, this seems like a part of the community where there's multiple challenges and they might end up need and the solutions may end up needing to go beyond the what appears to be the primary issue right now, which is La Costa, Vulcan and the 101. This evaluation, we may benefit from looking beyond it to see where good solutions are. That was just a comment. I do have a detailed question and I just sometimes, you know, the detail grabs me. I want to look at your slide ten. And if you don't mind, if you can advance to slide ten and pull it up. I like the idea of a crosswalk or a sidewalk that brings people to the bridge. But the blow up area that you have, that it shows the rectangular box and then you pull down a blow up to the lower part of the drawing where it looks like the sidewalk kind of dead ends and then you have to do a ninety degree turn and another ninety degree turn to catch the sidewalk and it looks like there's two ramps there. Am I understanding?
That is correct. That is correct.
I just want to call attention to that's a really challenging situation for someone in a wheelchair. Because they'll turn ninety degrees that go down the ramp and you're actually shooting them right into traffic. And if I know the intent isn't to do that, but it will require them to do another ninety degree turn to get back on a safe sidewalk. So if there could be another way of handling a detail like that where it's maybe more of a transition into the sidewalk instead of such an abrupt change of direction, it might be a solution that would accommodate someone in a wheelchair or someone with limited mobility. Better?
Understood. It does. It does meet the ADA standards currently, but I do get your point. Yeah, the only, the only concern I have is how that bike lane for the eastbound might still because because that if we want to have a transition, that would mean the whole line of the walkway that you see here would have to kind of tilt. And that would take away a little bit of space from our eastbound bike lane. But yeah, I'll certainly look at it. If it's doable, we'll do it.
Well, you bring up a good question where we're trying to put a whole bunch of things into this footprint of this roadway and then we've got the bridge. And the bridge can accommodate everything. So everything transitions down to less than preferable at the bridge. And that truly is a challenge that we want to be very careful about.
Yes, but point taken. If 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 this is supported by council, we'll we'll take another look and if it can be modified, we will. Obviously, at that point, we would have to come back for designing it to council again.
Can I just quickly ask on this slide, is it a sidewalk that goes into the bridge or is it a walkway?
Well, it's it's a walkway. It's not going to be concrete.
Okay, okay. So that that reduces the cost of it, too.
Absolutely, yes. The main reason being, again, the mobility element has not finalized the cross section. So we don't know what we're building here is going to be the final sidewalk or walkway or even the edge of the road for that matter.
Okay, thank you. Council member Henze.
Thank you. So I am feeling myself pulled towards scenario two and it's more because I really like Councilmember Krantz's suggestions of going forward for study with a roundabout and analyzing Sheridan, because I think those two are connected. But I think that's going to take millions of dollars. And and I think he's right about all of the development impact fees that we're going to be collecting in the future. But being that we don't have those fees now, I think that we do need to deliver a solution for the community, the residents who have been asking for it for almost three years now. So I'm in favor of doing the temporary stop sign. I really, I really don't like a a stop sign at this intersection because it's, you know, high speed, high volume. And we just removed one of those at Marchetta. But I think that the neighbors want it so much that I will support the neighbors in asking for that. And then the signal to me seems like something that can really help the pedestrian and the bike movement here at in times that it's really critical for us to have to offer that. I think we have seen an uptick in trips, both vehicles and just people wanting to walk and bike to the beach. And that signal is going to help improve safety a lot right there and probably make for mode shift where we don't currently have it. Let's see. I think if the stop sign is going to be any longer term than than, you know, the year and a half that you've you've suggested, that we would probably need to do a lot on Sheridan, including like, you know, no left turn for a certain time in the morning when it's really congested. Probably add speed humps there, probably even add another stop sign along the way to deter cut through traffic. So yeah, through the the emails that I received, it seems like there's a lot of support from neighbors to just go ahead and fund this the signal here. And it's not that big of a cost for how much we hear about this intersection and how much we know that it's a need there. But, you know, I support scenario two tonight, but I I can support in the future going ahead and, you know, doing the modeling and and finding a way to construct those roundabouts. I just just looking at the intersection of Vulcan and La Costa, you know, Abe, you already mentioned the slope. I think that there's retaining wall probably needed, right of way acquisition, all these things that can kind of drag out the period of time that it takes to go from design to actually constructing the roundabout. So if I can get any support for scenario two tonight, that's the one that I that I recommend.
Could you put scenario two back up? And when the council member says I support this scenario, could you please put that up at that time? So that as the person's talking about it, we're keeping all the details in mind and so is the public.
I I would ask, I would ask Kelly, what about the, what about the future right of way? Are you just going to give up and just leave that road as narrow as it is? Or and maybe Abe could speak to whether the existing right of way, if we put in signals, how does that complicate acquisition of right of way and and redoing the roadway?
So good question. The current design does not does not consider any kind of widening or any kind of major modification of the cross section. It works on the footprint of the intersection as it is right now. So we're just doing some ADA improvements. We're putting the signal where the current stopping bars are. So no major changes to the locations where cars actually stop right now. And the poles will be there. If they are going to be exactly where they should be when the ultimate, you know, fate and cross section of of La Costa is defined by the mobility element, I I can't say, but but chances are slim.
That's a lot of money to put into unsure.
Well, if we can move them, I mean, it's not like the whole money would be wasted. I mean, moving a signal is doable. But I mean, the infrastructure will be there. I mean, the conduits will be there, the controller cabinet. And most of the stuff that we have there can remain. And we can anticipate some sort of widening and order a longer masterarm that can work for us in the future if La Costa is going to be widened. But you are correct, we will be not, I don't want to use the word waste, but we will have to re-spend some more money if La Costa cross section changes in the future.
Okay, thank you. Council member Mosca.
Thank you so much, Abe. This is an incredibly important part of our city that we really need to pay attention to. I know that we've been doing work and slowly making progress in this area. Clearly, Vulcan and La Costa need a lot of work. I wasn't aware until Deputy Mayor Krantz just mentioned about the additional right of way. And, you know, there there's a tremendous amount of growth in this area commercially and residential area, too. So I I do support the idea that we need to not get too far out with a lot of temporary fixes. We do need to kind of envision what that corridor is going to be like in the future and and how it should function and operate in the future as well. And I'm not aware. So there's a lot of missing information here for me. I'm not aware of, you know, of the financial partnership with Carlsbad and 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 the additional funds that would be would be would be relevant for some of this work. You know, this is a major undertaking that absolutely needs to happen. You know, and I I encourage that kind of big broader thinking that we need to do and not just kind of do temporary fixes. But I'd like to kind of get more information and have more conversation about the the additional funding that that comes to bear from Carlsbad and also the 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 partnership with Carlsbad in general, like what we have to do in terms of coordination with them. That sounds long term and it sounds like, you know, capital improvement program. And I'm not sure that we've been talking about this within our C I P. So it sounds like a a big thing. And and I think that there's a consensus right now for for something in the interim. And so I would support the always always stop because it makes sense and it would enhance the safety in that area in the future. I think that that it could get to a Rancho Santa Fe situation. And and we need to have, we need to have a, we need to have a discussion about what the future looks like and how we're going to get to that future. I'm also kind of confused as to even some of the cost here. Council, a couple of the council members talked about signal four hundred thousand. We we're talking in the last item about striping. We're talking, you know, several thousand, like, you know, five thousand here, ten thousand here. But here we're talking about, and that was like, you know, we have to continue the conversation and see where we're going to get the money. Here we're talking about four hundred thousand and this is the first time. I mean, I'm not sure that this item was, you know, was in our C I P. It wasn't in our general fund. So I'm trying to understand where these, is there, is there a specific fund for this? And was this a set set aside already? Anyways, I think that that I'd like to know that. But I'm I'm definitely in favor of always stop and 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 looking at this this corridor and how it's going to function in the future and and taking steps to really kind of envision this corridor and put together a vision for this corridor in the future, which may actually be, I like what Deputy Mayor Krantz was talking about. I think that that it's going to, it's going to maybe necessary to take up some of that right of way and put some mobility measures in there that that are going to really allow the hotel and other commercial uses in that area to encourage their their their, the folks that are visiting to use bikes or walk or other ways of getting around other than cars. And so, so, yeah, anyways, I don't know if you have an answer in terms of the four hundred thousand. Where would we get that four hundred thousand?
There are a few sources. We have the the Carlsbad agreement that Councilman Krantz mentioned. And we have, I believe, the R T C I P has some funds in it that would allow us to you to be used for new signals. There is a combination of accounts, but there is no, to your point, there is no set aside. It was not on the on the C I P projects list. So it's not like something that council has funded. There's no four hundred thousand dollar account set aside for the signal. There are a combination sources.
Thank you, Abe, and I didn't mean to cut you off. And so when we were talking earlier about, you know, well, this this feasibility on the on the the last item. on the on the the last item, and we were talking about that study coming back and us having worked on it for two years, put fifty thousand dollars into it. And we said, well, we're going to come back and and measure and weigh this against all the other projects. So are you saying that this money is the same money that we would use to weigh against all the other projects?
No.
This would be funding for all the other projects that we're talking about? That in 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 weighing and balancing, this is the funding that we're talking about?
The the majority of this is not in competition with other areas of town, if that's if that's your concern.
So it's coming from coming from an agreement with Carlsbad and and other other sources that would not be that would not be competitive for 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 striping, for crosswalks and stuff like that?
Correct, not eligible for certain different certain certain different projects in the city.
All right, all right.
Let's see, let's hear from Director Dougherty. She just is ready to talk.
Thank you, Mayor. I I wanted to clarify that there is a La Costa project. There is a La Costa corridor project within the Development Services Project List. The funding identified here is a mix of transnet, traffic mitigation fees and other very specific types of dollars. The outstanding balance of that account is just a little bit over a million dollars. And the funds requested here would be reallocated or allocated from that account. So that would not be part of the unallocated general funds that was discussed as part of the CIP prioritization earlier this year.
Thank you. That that really does help me out here. And so thank you so much for for that clarification. I didn't realize that there was a fund for that, and so thank you. I can absolutely support the always stop. And 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 I think that, you know, going toward the signalization, going toward looking toward more of a future situation. You know, I think that the signal is is going to be much less expensive and we can probably deploy that quicker. I don't see how that could have a problem with. It it is unlikely to stand in the way of even that future discussion of of using more right of way and and envisioning the whole whole corridor. So even if we deployed that in the short term, we could still move toward a more long term vision for that corridor.
Let's hear from the city manager.
I I just want to clarify, these funds are not restricted to La Costa. They are available to use as long as they meet the criterias of the transnet and ATV, et cetera.
I'm sorry, I'm so I just heard several different things. All right, so so, all right. So are they competitive for for, can I, can I, Deputy Mayor, can I just, can I just get one response? So are they competitive for other things like crosswalks and line adjustments and lane adjustments and and the things that we were talking about in the last slide, in the last item?
So the funds that I I just wanted to clarify that the funds in the La Costa corridor accounts were set aside for the La Costa corridor. They could be, and and City Manager Ansel is correct, that they could be reallocated to other purposes and other uses. And they could also be utilized for a number of improvements throughout the corridor. However, with respect to the constraints of the traffic mitigation, there are certain types of improvements. Typically, they are traffic control, traffic mitigation. So always stop controls, roundabouts, stop signs. Those types of improvements are the types of things that those funds could be used for. With respect to the percentage of traffic mitigation funds versus the other types of funds, I would need to come back and provide that information once I'm able to look more clearly at the account.
Thank you.
Can can you just clarify whether the La Costa corridor has a million dollars? Because that just doesn't seem right to me, that we have a line item for La Costa at a million dollars?
My understanding is that account was created many years ago with the intention of widening the La Costa corridor consistent with the previous, we refer to circulation element, now referred to as the mobility element. And because it was not a supported effort, the fund remained in the account until other uses could be could be proposed for the corridor. Here, because we recognize that traffic mitigation, adjustment to the traffic flow were needed for La Costa. And we we were looking at La Costa. We we did not propose the reallocation of those funds from that account.
Okay, so I just really want to understand, though, how much of this comes from Carlsbad, this million? And how much of it is transnet and other things?
None of the funds had come from Carlsbad that are sitting in this account.
Okay, could you put scenario one back up? Because it sounded to me like Councilmember Mosca might have been leaning toward that, which is the always stop and then basically evaluate the other. Well, you're evaluating the always stop, but potentially evaluating the roundabout and the traffic light for congestion.
Can I make a motion? That we go with scenario one and Councilmember Mosca and I work with city staff and reach out to the elected officials, Teresa Acosta and others in Carlsbad to kind of get to the bottom of the whole situation with the settlement agreement and to see what has to happen with that. They, I know, claim that the threshold for providing any money for improvements to La Costa Avenue has not been reached yet. But I think it would be good to know, you know, what that might, what those thresholds are and 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 get the details on that. And then the other question is about the right of way and whether there is, you know, what, we all know that La Costa Avenue, we don't want it to be four lanes, but we also don't want people to have to walk on the roadbed. We want sidewalks and we want bike facilities that are are appropriate. And so if we could adopt scenario one for now, put in the always stops to address some of the pedestrian safety improvements and 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 such. And then Councilmember Mosca and I can get with the city of Carlsbad and the city attorney and the city manager to see what kind of information we can bring about regarding that settlement agreement.
Yeah, I could support that, but I'm really, the thing that I care about the most here is that walkway. Because to me, it seems like we need to really improve conditions for people who are trying to get to the beach and across Highway one oh one. So I want to make sure the walkway, I don't want to delay the, because that's, that's not, I don't see that on here. But can you just address that, Abe? Like, why is why is that not on here?
So so this this three scenarios address only the intersection. Scenario one is just a stop sign, we'll evaluate and come back. Scenario two is this stop sign, we'll start funding and building the signal immediately. Scenario three is this stop sign plus starting working on modeling and feasibility analysis for the roundabout. The fourth piece is a given on all those. You, I mean, obviously, you can direct us not to do it. But the fourth piece, the the walkway is a separate element of this presentation. Council can vote for that separately.
Okay, well, I'll just say that I'm a reluctant supporter of stop signs in general because I think they're old technology. I think there are other ways, better ways. And to stop in the middle of the night and all the times that you don't need to be stopping and starting, creating the congestion, the emissions, just like on Rancho Santa Fe Road, I just really don't like it. But I also don't feel like these other options are likely, like, I don't think we should fund any of the other ones. They're too much right now, given the information we don't know. So council, it sounds like everybody else on the council has supported at least the stop sign and the walkway. So I I'm I'm okay supporting that and letting Councilmember Mosca work with Deputy Mayor Krantz to to figure out some of these other pieces. It seems, you know, so I guess that's my feeling about this. Unless unless, yeah, that, you know, I'm seconding your motion.
Yeah, right. Joe, are you okay with that?
I said yes five times.
Okay, then let's go ahead and vote if no, nobody else seems like they need to speak.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. So it is adopting the resolution approving the always stop control at the intersection of Vulcan and La Costa. And then also adopting City Council Resolution twenty twenty fifty, approval of design for the new walkway on La Costa Avenue.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I mean, scenario one is a little bit modified. So it's not, it's not returning in six months. It's, I mean, really, it's them, it's the creation of this subcommittee of Councilmember and Deputy Mayor to to consider options.
Although I think that six months is a good timeframe and I would endeavor to, you know, bring, be able to bring back more information in that period of time. I I if it's going to be a traffic signal, I don't want to delay the ordering of the polls if it's going to be a waiting list. So, you know, my hope is that with the city manager, city attorney and and reaching out to Carlsbad to explore that settlement agreement, we can, we can move swiftly.
Okay, wait, let's, Henze has her hand up, so let's call on her.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit nervous about the amount of time that's going to go by between implementing the always stop control and then coming back to to decide what it is that we do there. And I really feel like it could be a decade before we have everything ready to do, go forward with roundabouts. So I I just hope that my colleagues do return in six months with a recommendation that won't delay the traffic signal if we find out that there's going to be a lot of additional delays and getting Carlsbad to commit to their share and that there would be some technical difficulties with creating these roundabouts. And also that if if the two of you are working together on this, that within the six months, the problems that crop up with any cut through traffic on Sheridan Street also be part of what you're working to address so that we can nip those in the bud before it becomes a habit for a lot of cut through traffic in the neighborhoods.
Okay, okay, good, that sounds great. So so we'll just leave the motion written as is and and the walkway as is. And then and then that's that, that's the motion.
Correct, Mayor, I'm just clarifying because it it does say adopt two different resolutions on here. So Abe, I'm just asking, do you need Resolution twenty twenty one forty nine for the always stop or no?
Correct, that one we still need it. That's a Monaco, yeah.
And that covers scenario one, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I think the only thing that Mayor Mayor suggested we change was when we come back in six months, we will not just report about how the stop sign is functioning. We'll report back about what we want to do with this intersection.
Right, but that can be, that can just be more informal.
Correct, I don't, I don't think we need to include it in the motion.
Okay, so Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca? Yes, Deputy Mayor Krantz?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. So those are all of our agenda items. We don't have any information items, council member items. Does anybody have any one, two, three, four reports they want to share?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
NCTD had a meeting last Thursday. It was quite a unique one. And we moved forward with a contract to do a in-depth analysis of the right of way, including property lines and elevations and such, so that there can be an analysis of the view shed as part of the development of a solution regarding the fencing. And so that is going to be taking place and over the next several months. There was a lot of talk about how.
In our city, Tony, or in Del Mar?
No, in the city of Del Mar.
Okay, yeah, you didn't set up.
So that, yeah, no, this was, I should have been more clear. Del Mar, Del Mar, who has been, of course, fighting tooth and nail. And they continued that fight last Thursday. But, you know, as part of a negotiated settlement agreement, this analysis is is going to be conducted at the expense of of NCTD. So that's what they're working on. So I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. I wanted to mention that the coaster is is moving back to having its regular schedule. It will start this weekend. Service was reduced as part of the pandemic in March of twenty twenty, and we are moving towards a full summer schedule resuming Memorial Day weekend. And the frequencies will be twenty two trips Monday through Thursday, twenty six trips on Fridays, twelve trips on Saturdays and eight trips on Sundays. The return of the popular six nine nine Padres train. We'll be back to see our exciting Padres who are actually winning some ballgames. It's really kind of fun. And then we will also have some transit opportunities that I mentioned earlier to get to the fair. So we're hoping that we'll embrace transit and have take, take advantage of the opportunity to ride the train down to San Diego. Bring your bike along and you can ride downtown and and enjoy a little change of scenery going down to the harbor in San Diego. The masks are still required on public transit. So if you do choose to go, be sure to bring your mask with you. If you don't, there will be masks available, but you know, there goes, so that's it.
Can I just ask a quick question about the Del Mar Bluffs? So I read this, that newspaper, the newspaper article and don't know anything other than that. But is it really the case that the bluffs are sliding into the ocean in Del Mar and that it's an active construction site? And yet there's no fence blocking people from walking across that to get to the beach? And you're going to study it for view? Is that really accurate?
Yes, that's true. It seems kind of odd, but what we're, what we're working on doing is finding the right location for the fence. And it's part of the settlement agreement with, you know, there's negotiated settlements going on between the city of Del Mar, the Coastal Commission and NCTD. There's an upper bluff area and there's a lower bluff area. And so the idea is to show what the impacts of a fence will be on the view shed. And, you know, it's, it's been the way it is for a hundred years and they're, they just want to leave it the same. It's a problem for NCTD and it's been an ongoing issue. And yes, there is a an agreement between NCTD and the and Del Mar and the Coastal Commission to do this analysis as part of the solution.
And NCTD is the one paying for this study?
Yes, that's true.
Uh huh, okay. And in meanwhile, the city of Encinitas, the fence for our corridor is at what stage in terms of what's happening between La Costa and Lucadia Boulevard?
It's going in as part of the streetscape project along the parking pods. And that is the only construction of fencing that I know of is is associated with the parking pods.
Okay, but right now there are no parking pods going in between Lucadia Boulevard and La Costa. The parking pots are all south of Lucadia Boulevard.
No, no, there's some.
Oh, okay.
Several, two nice ones.
Okay. Okay, so the fence is going in next to those parking pots?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, you know, I I also had read in the article that the place where you have the most fatalities on your train track is actually in Del Mar. And there are the place that's not getting the fence.
Well, we're working towards the fence, just like everywhere else, Oceanside, Encinitas, Del Mar. And this is, this is the process we're working through. It's, it's not happening very quickly, but it's, it's intended to get to the final result, which is is improving safety in the corridor. And you make a good point about the situation with the with the bluffs. There are people that are traveling, you know, there are no stairs. They don't have stairs. They have just goat trails going down the bluffs. And we all know the dangers that the bluffs present. And those bluffs are technically NCTD's liability. So it's, it's really presented a pretty challenging situation, so.
Yeah, okay, okay. Anybody else with their one, two, three, four report? I don't see any hands up.
I I did want to briefly report on the fact that Councilmember Lyons' first meeting of Encina Wastewater Board of Directors was today. And she did a fabulous job representing the city of Encinitas. So thank you, Joy, for being on the the board. Two, two items to highlight. One is that that we have, Encina has moved its meters to Clean Energy Alliance, which is the Community Choice Energy Program for the city of Carlsbad, Del Mar and Slanta Beach. So we've moved all of our meters to that CCE at one hundred percent, at their one hundred percent tariff. So that was a. So that was a, a great victory to have them at 100% with CEA. Also, you know that our general manager is leaving. And so we today decided to form an ad hoc committee made up of myself and two other directors to, to, to go forth with the RFP process, to hire an executive recruiter. And then to start looking at some of the applicants and bring a few applicants to the board to decide who our next general manager would be. So that's all I have to report unless Joy has additional insight that she'd like to share.
Councilmember Mosca, I just want to thank Mayor Blake Spear for all her good work she's done on that, on that board prior to me stepping in today. So I look forward to carrying the flag forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad you're, you're, you're on it, it's great, it was a great transition. And so I would just like to make sure that we are continuing with the council direction from last week about the senior dances having an elevated priority. And so come the 15th, if everything is lifted, that those dances are starting right up for those seniors who need something to do and our senior center being a great place for them to do that.
Yes, I believe our Parks and Recreation Director who's already made contact, we won't know until the 15th what the parameters are, but all roads ahead look to be that everything is going to open up. So we're really excited about that.
Yes, and do we have our city hall planning to open up too and our city staff coming back from work?
We have lots of fun, exciting things, so hopefully we won't be disappointed. One of the concerns that we have is that things will open up, but that the individual counties could still have some jurisdiction over tier system, et cetera. So we're really hoping that it's just a fully open situation.
Okay, great. Well, whenever we know, whenever, I mean, it seems like it's what, three weeks away about? We should announce pending a change that we're going to be opening city hall for the public to come back to city hall and us to have meetings and people to come to the city hall and have, find staff there as of a certain date. So do, are we planning that for the 15th or do you want to announce that?
Yes, I mean, we, we have, we have announced it and continue to indicate that we will be updating as we have more information. And so right now, we've in fact ordered our staff that is still working remotely to return on June 15th. And so we are full steam ahead.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, everybody, and with that, we are adjourned.